Hey, how's everyone doing tonight? That good, huh? It's very quiet.
Having a hard time finding that mute button.
Did we have materials for the cow or no? I, none of the, I didn't see anything in the packet and then it just occurred to me, was there? And?
Not that I know of, I think, not on my item. I don't think for the others, you might see some presentations, but there was nothing ahead of time.
So we did have the free grant material in there. And of course, the standing planning, planning calendar.
Yes. Just have to rearrange my screen here. Um, and I just want to say, well, most, I think most of you are on here, we're missing a few people. I'm having a hard time. I'm going to restart everything later tonight. My email has not been fully updating. So if you've tried to get ahold of me that way and I haven't responded yet, I apologize. I'm going to try the good old restart and hopefully that solves it, but we'll see. All right, let's see, who are we? I think we're just missing dot at this point, right?
She's coming.
Okay.
Let's see, is the mayor going to not attend the cow or does anyone know?
Oh yeah, I think she should, oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, I'm here.
Okay, yeah, no, the mayor should be joining us. So we'll just, we will hold off another minute or so here. But other than that, we've got, well, I'm sure we can go ahead and get started since we're at our time now. Oh, there she comes. All right, so go ahead and call to order the committee of the whole meeting at 5:32 here. And just want to start with that, good of the order. Did any council members or anyone else have anything to bring up? All right, not hearing any, so we'll move on to. So for review of the regular meeting agenda, I just wanted to call out. If you scroll down on your agenda, you can see the consent agenda items. You know, the only thing besides the usual meeting minutes and all that is the renewal of memorandum of understanding for the community garden. Is everyone good with that going on consent tonight? Any other issues with the agenda that you wanted to talk about right now? Or does everything look fine? Okay. All right, well, with that, oh wait, hold on. Oh, he's here, okay, good. I had to make sure Director Lenishevsky, so has our first agenda item, results of the community survey for parks. I'll hand it over to him.
Good evening, everyone, very efficient tonight. Boy, one minute behind and I was late. All right, I'm going to try to do a full screen this time since we're practicing here. Let's go presentation mode. And then see, it gives you this extra screen that I don't want. I'm going to minimize it. I'm going to share. And then let's see where it goes. Okay, full screen? Uh-oh.
I see you starting to share, but I don't actually see anything but black right now.
Yeah, I was thinking.
Looks like it started.
Yeah, I've, I've frozen and now did it propagate?
There it is.
Got it.
Oh, that's new, participants can now see your application. Wow, upgrade from our friends at Zoom, okay. So I believe I haven't posted actually the survey results, which we will get to that in raw form, I just need to strip out email addresses. So make a note for myself, I already forgot about that as I was going through it today. But we did have quite a bevy of responses. It, I don't know, historic, I guess, right? Ms. McHenry, so. What we're looking at is the city of Duval Big Rock Ballpark with its recently purchased 10 acres to the south. We'll go over the property, look at the analysis. Prior to the survey, we had some, some work done on survey and environmental review with some consultant support. I'll go over the survey results, the findings, you know, whether the next steps are derived from tonight or another meeting or back to committee. It's fine, but just summarizing those findings, we will work with our consultant. We do have a very preliminary contract with the consultant to help get to where we were with some of the options, understand the property, do the investigations with the environmental tree, wetland and those folks. And then, you know, they would recommend based on survey and councils, you know, support of the survey findings moving forward and then, then we would go to another contract for full design. So we did obtain $100,000 from King County Grant Programming for Design. Right now Bruce Dees and Associates is our preliminary design consultant and will be working to finalize, you know, the thought process and then recommending costs for design and construction moving forward. So basic stuff, obviously you'll get finite detail when you get into a real design contract and you know, some more community involvement. But with that said, if you have or haven't been familiar, so each of these are two separate types of analysis. The ball field on your left, in each of these, so we call the developable area. The light blue is some of the setback requirements from wetlands onsite or off. There's a creek outback that has a setback from it. So the white areas are generally unencumbered by development standards in the city. The green dots are some trees. These bands of green are pretty significant tree stands and do or don't include some trees that are identified in our tree study. You can see the image on the right of your screen there, again, the existing field facilities and then some of the more of the tree protection layout that has preliminarily been conducted. So a good standard trees onsite, the wetland, you know, we have talked briefly for those who don't know, maybe as much as the committee. The well and is a size and type that may not be fillable. We would go through a hearing process, it's really out of our hands. Whether we had that recommendation or not, which is why we did sort of have some of the questions related to no development potential and developability and how much, and how far do we want to push it? With development, because we could apply for, you know, a wetland fill and go that route, but there's no guarantee. So there is a little risk in that approach. Just an image out of the wetland study from ESA, who conducted that for the project. Yeah, this is the property line here, and these are the offsite stream and buffer setbacks that do propagate onto our property. Some of the initial kind of images that Bruce Dees and Associates put together, you know, really talked and thought about the passive, the sports focused approach or a combination. And you would all, nobody would argue the existing ball field is a 100% sports focused facility and maximized in its development. Those were different times, the city had had that parcel for a very long time. So it's, you know, all the critical areas and all that stuff is a different ballgame than versus today. And some of the elements here in the bottom, you know, passive approach, trails, the central lawns, picnic and parking. And then, you know, you combo from sports fields and parking and then you get a blend of kind of all of that. They did try to acknowledge some sort of wetland remnant on the, you know, their renditions. Obviously you can see a fill again, what that does or doesn't look like as we move forward is not decided by any means yet. Just a little kind of a similar type of image, but more spoke, sports focused. They were just providing some, some documentation and some images as we went through the early process last year. And now, so just some, some points in the survey for everybody. So the committee worked to prepare the questions that we put out. We did put out 14 overall, a couple of them weren't really questions towards the end. But, you know, demographics were, we thought were important, understanding, trying to figure out where people do live. Majority of the respondents were certainly Duval or Carnation, unincorporated centric, a pretty significant amount, and that's in there. We did receive 752 surveys and I think we realized that committee at the time. So Ms. McHenry, Mr. Schaefer, I don't think any of us actually took the survey. By the time we were setting it all up and figuring it all out and we both, we had a meeting the next week and we're like, ah, I don't think we took the survey and all three of us said the exact same thing. It was, it was really kind of funny. We all had intended to, but we never, we never got to it. I was watching it constantly, you know, watching the numbers go up and up and checking out the responses. But yeah, it was pretty funny that we, none of us did, so. There's no swathe of one, two or three voting out of the 752. So we'll go over the questions, I, I don't know if anybody saw them, we did some, have this posted to the website and that page. Again, and moving towards design in the future, there is no contract yet, of course, just the very preliminary one for 25 grand. But we did get the King County Parks Grant of 100 grand and then at the end of the month, no, beginning of May, there is an RCO grant due for design, which can be another 100,000. So here we go. These are a little out of order purposely, I kind of wanted to go over demographics before we get into details. I figured we'd like to hit the high towards the end instead of, you know, kind of wander away. Just the use data, you know, people would suggest they might use this at least once a week. We didn't ask seasonally, so you know, I would imagine depending on what you do or what your kids do or weather related, you may use it more than once a week, sometimes in the year or less. But bottom line is, the majority of folks would certainly use it at least once a week, if not more. Times of use, interesting, I imagine the 7 AM, 10 AM are their walkers and non-youth sports related activities or people trying to get out, maybe if they thought hard about getting out in the summer before it warmed up. But again, a whole range of use, the bulk of it is the four to seven o'clock hour. Very common, we can attest to that because we are almost 100% booked from four to eight or nine most days during the week. A little, again, demographics, how many children per household? 74% of the respondents do have children and one to three or more is how we broke it out. So good to see we do have some folks without kids. I imagine empty nesters or building nesters, so. I sadly can report, I did not fit the maximum demographic on this screen. So I am aging myself out of society. But yeah, a pretty good use of the 35 to 44 year old taking the survey. So now into the questions at hand. So we tried to set some priority, set some questions up to help us ascertain what priorities we should consider. Thinking about a built out park, thinking about the environment and those protections. And so bottom line, so he's recently purchased 10 acre park adjacent to the existing park is forested with a mix of small, medium and significant trees, a small wetland and wetland buffers. Planning the park expansion should prioritize which of the following? It was enjoyment and protection of the natural environment, minimizing impact to the natural environment while providing needed recreational amenities. And then maximizing the number of amenities the site can allow, so. I think we're probably out of time, we want to chew a little bit around the screen here and people can weigh in. But to me, that means more of the combo approach to the best of our abilities and fitting in as many things as we can while also obviously minding the sensitive areas and trying to incorporate them into the site. So we did chew on this a little at a committee meeting, nothing in detail like we're going over now because it's kind of all, all included. So what are, what are folks' thoughts on this? I want to see hands and chat a little, tired of hearing myself all the time.
I could, if, if that's okay.
Former Chair McHenry.
I was just thinking, I remember it's been a little while, but I think one of the things we talked about is the different kinds of ways you can maximize. You know, amenities like, for example, the multi-use fields, you know, they can have different lines. I think that was one thing I recall talking about in, in our committee where I think Steve, you were talking about, you know, a certain size of field could be, you know, used as a baseball diamond, but also, you know, have different lines on it. Similar to how some of our fields are. And then, you know, the other thing to think about is field three being grass. You know, I was just at a baseball game the other night with my son. He was the only game I think that didn't get rained out because the kids that were, you know, scheduled to play on the grass got rained out. So even just maximizing in terms of not necessarily pushing into the wetland and the buffer, but rethinking the whole park and can we maximize it in a different way that isn't going to mean we're filling a wetland? So I just wanted to throw that out there.
All right, I saw Councilmember McHenry.
Naplins.
I saw the hand and I looked at the name, sorry.
Yeah, um, just looking at this and, you know, we'll get to more questions later that I think will kind of prove this point more is that people want a lot of different things. So for one person minimizing the impact while providing needed recreational amenities. I think people's definition of needed are going to be very varied. And so to meet needed, we aren't going to have enough space on the current piece of property, just looking at, you know, the little drawings of how they tried to fit things in. There's really not, you can get one big field and if we try, you know, to do the middle version here, there's really not going to be a room to provide a lot of the different amenities that people are looking for. And when I look at a park like Big Rock, and this has been something I felt for a long time, you really want to have, you know, a consolidation of your park amenities because they can be served by a single bathroom, shared parking. You have people in and out of there all during the day, so it protects the asset by having it being used all the time. And so the more variety that you can provide at that park, I think the better for the community, the better use of our investment. And so just contemplating that, and I brought this up before, I think we should consider looking at additional property. So as we design this, if we knew we might have additional property, you could design it in a way where you could add on the other amenities that everyone's asking for. And as we have money, you could add more. I'm just concerned that if we really limit the scope of what we can do here and design it one way, we're kind of boxing ourselves in a bit and, and not able to address all the, the needs. And like I said, one person's version of needed recreational amenities is going to be very different than another. And so we're going to have to pick one or two, which is going to leave quite a few people out, is my concern. So I, I really, you know, if you look at our parks plan from many, many years back, if you look at the comp plan, just the regular one. I, I think the vision would be acquiring property ahead of time and that area has not been annexed into the city. So acquiring it ahead of, you know, 20, 30 years down the line if we annex it. You know, making the acquisitions, if we wanted to do more ahead of time versus waiting is really the appropriate way. So whether or not we have the money to develop a larger area right now, having it involved in the planning process, I think would be a wise move. The community is growing and anyway, and I'm just, I'm going to try to cut it short here, but the other thing I wanted to mention is that King County, we've had a lot of conversations with them and Duval Park is the park that serves us and they can't add any amenities down there pretty much because it's in a flood plain. And so potentially could King County come into a partnership with us to help us expand? There could be a shared maintenance agreement where they work with us, where it's a joint park or, or something. I don't know, I think we really need to dream big because I think our community is dreaming big. They have lots of great ideas and lots of needs. And I just don't want to box ourselves in at this point. And so I'm done, sorry, that was kind of a long speech, I apologize.
Uh, let's go alphabetical last name, Isaacson.
Great, thank you, sorry, I was trying to find the mute button. No, I knew where it was, I just couldn't, couldn't get my mouse on it. But Jennifer, I think you said it very well, I was going to hone in on the word needed as well. And how are we going to define need? I mean, maybe another survey or something like that because, you know, needed recreational amenities could be, in some people's minds, less ballparks, right? It could be trails, it could, that's what I saw when I took the surveys, kind of looked to me like you guys did a great job trying to figure out what do people really want? And so what's our next step in growth of our parks, right? Is it? I think we should do another survey to figure out what do, what does the community feel is needed? And or do we already have the data as a city that says, look, our ball fields are already booked to capacity? And we also have a waiting list, you know, it shows if we had more ballparks, this is a type of revenue we could get and it will offset the additional cost. And I think that's very key for us too, as, as a city is to make sure, yeah, everyone's saying we need it, but if we can't afford it, we shouldn't build it until we get people on board with paying whatever additional taxes or fees it will be for the quote unquote needs. So it's not just, I think, a vote of what people want, but the monetary needs as well is what we need to take into account.
I just a point or question maybe before Councilmember Lingle. Do you think it's fair to put on, I'm kind of making some notes for discussion with consultant to, to, you know, like you said, you defined the need, but maybe we can fit one of these, two of these, three of these things somewhere else, right? Is that a reasonable approach to put together?
Yeah, I think that exactly, we would prioritize, you know, if the majority of the community says we need a ballpark in the city, it shows that we need it because we have the bookings that are not taking because we don't have the space, then that would be the top priority, right? You know, one ball field, two ball fields, a combined ball field, you know, something like that. And all we can do is rack and stack and, and, and put it within the space that we have, right? And then like Jennifer's saying, okay, we know we need more than we got now, let's, let's think big now and go to the next step. But I think we got to be very sensitive as a city as well and make sure that, like you said, we can't keep everyone happy. But if we keep only doing one thing, there's people that are sitting around thinking, hey, I gave you my word on what I wanted. If we don't find some way to work those other things in there, you're going to, you know, make a lot of people unhappy as well.
Next. Ms. Lingle, alphabetical by last name with hands.
That's good. Well, I did take the survey and I was one of the people in the middle. The word needed is probably not the, from a survey perspective, probably we shouldn't have had that word in there. But the reason I answered it that way is because actually something that former council member Bernanke talked about, which is, you know, having a place where you might have a sports activity, but there's a place to sort of walk around the edges and enjoy the natural environment. And we do have some really beautiful, significant trees there as well. So that's, that's why I answered the question that way. To the other points that have been made, what we're really talking about is land banking for recreation needs. And land banking for something like this is a good idea if we can see opportunities to fund that cap, you know, to capitalize that activity. The, the other thing that this survey was not designed to do, but I think it goes to the, you know, think big is, I, I guess I've always been very curious what our real long vision is for McCormick Park. We have a really nice trail there, a lot of open space, but it's not nearly as active a park as it could be. So I think if we're going to think big, we also have to keep the corner park in the back of our minds. It's great to have the concerts there and things like that, but it could be a much, much more active park for family use than what it is now. So those are, if we're going to think big, I think we also have to think about McCormick Park.
Perfect, yeah, not to, for a, not trying to create more discussion because we'll have some later, but you know, this Laura will be conducting the comprehensive planning work starting soon. That will talk about parks in discussions with some of the park agencies. Our park plan is so old, it does not allow us to be eligible for some of the programs that exist. So we are going to have to update that parks plan, which is probably relevant coming out of a comprehensive plan update anyway. So not to be too freaked out, but yes, it is more work, does delay things a bit, but yeah, I think you have a lot of opportunities, the quilt is there, just how do we put things and where do we put them? So I, I think that's something to consider as well. Mr. Mercer patiently waiting with his hand, must be tired.
Oh, no, and some of these points have been touched on. I, I found it interesting and obviously we're only on question one of, of many. But how the survey was framed a little bit, I mean, in terms of the context, it's specifically around the big park expansion rather than in the context of Big Rock Park as a whole or parks as a whole for Duval. And we've done both, the, the reason I'm sort of starting with that premise is and having kids, I mean, who participate in recreational sports. And you touched on it already, Steve, I mean, the challenge has been there's all, there's a limited number of fields for, there, there's not enough facilities to hold any type of tournaments. There's some economies of scale in terms of facilities. And while I'm, I'm sort of the first person to line up for tree retention, natural facilities, they're part of the conversation. It's got to be around applicability of the property for one use versus another. In, in no way de-emphasizing the, the importance of those other attributes and other things that, that our citizens want, some of which we're getting through the, the community parks that are being developed with Toll Brothers, but we're, we're always working against that. The backlog of need versus availability. So I, I think the broader conversation is what do we do now versus on the longer term? I would just, in the same way, I, I struggled with the opportunity cost of initially letting this parcel go. Unfortunately, we came back and we got it again, sort of a second bite of the apple. There's only a finite amount of places that we could put a consolidated athletic facilities. And I do think it's important from a family perspective to have some onsite facilities for younger children. As Jennifer said, things that would draw people to the park at other hours of the day. But there is an optimal use and an opportunity cost with, with not potentially taking advantage of the, the sports opportunity. If Big Rock Park was in a better state, but even there, it's still, it's the adjacency that has a lot of value versus spreading fields out in different locations. I also just wanted to raise, and this is more, I think of a how it's being applied, but there is some gender equity as well. I mean, my daughter never got to practice on that park really, she was always practicing up at Redmond Ridge because the boys were practicing there. With a second set of fields, you know, a little more balance. I mean, again, it's, that's a subjective view, but I do think there's a lot of things in terms of optimizing the sports component and then fitting in additional things. So it still doesn't have to be all at one, but in that middle, if we want that middle route, I would prefer, at least my point of view was, I think there's, there's some real value in, in optimizing the, the sports athletic related components and, and, and really creating a, you know, a jewel or for the city. And then addressing the, the remaining, you know, gaps through other either investments, acquisitions or partnerships with the public private and, and, and obviously King County.
All right, Mr. Schaefer's hand.
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Steve. Let's see, a couple of thoughts here. First of all, I share council members, Naplins concerned about Council members naplins concerned about, well, why don't, what are we able to acquire more land, especially adjacent land? And have a bigger, bigger facility and and would that change anything that we want to do now? And I I don't know the answer to that, but the. The this additional parcel is limited in what we can do, uh, because of the wetlands. And unless we do something drastic like fill, you know, fill those in, which we don't even know if we could do that, but. Uh, again, it it has, I guess, uh, limited possibilities for sports fields. Relative to, you know, what we have, what we have existing. And therefore, you know, maybe the response that that. Preferred a multi-use facility with full sport, some sports fields and other facilities. Isn't a bad one at all. Uh, it probably fits that land better than, uh, better than anything else. And then thinking about it too, even if we're able to acquire adjacent land, I'm not sure that would change anything we want to do with this parcel, at least nothing drastically. Uh, I think we, you know, we all agree, and I think our constituents agree that we do need some additional. Uh, sports facilities. And in addition to that recreational facility, so kind of this, uh, this mixed use. Uh, I think was a, a good outcome from the, from the survey. And probably the most practical outcome that we could, uh, come up with as far as the limitations of the. Land itself. Along with that, uh, as you, you know, most of us, myself included, are very much concerned about, you know, chopping down yet more trees. However, uh, most of the trees on this parcel are not. Uh, are not exceptional trees. I think, you know, Steve showed the areas where we have some exceptional trees. Uh, but for the most part, uh, this, this isn't so, you know, in that respect, minimal impact to our, uh, you know, to our. Uh, trees here, uh, here in Duval. And finally, not to belabor this too much. Certainly, there, there's a need for more sports fields as far as use of those sports fields. But I think just as importantly is the fact that the this, these, this facility has potential. To contribute to the economic development of Duval overall. Uh, we gotta keep that in mind. It's gonna bring in, you know, out of town traffic, families, they're gonna go out, they're gonna do things in Duval, they're gonna have lunch. They're gonna go, you know, walk down Main Street. It it will have, I, my, my belief is will have significant positive impact, uh, to Duval in, uh. In that respect, and as of, uh, you know, somebody say the people will come in, enjoy themselves, spend their money and and leave. And there's a lot to be, a lot to be said for that. So, uh, anyway, it's a positive thing in many, in many aspects. Thanks.
Yeah, and I would just add briefly to, you know, the, the reservations of our current facilities. Um, certainly would be easier if we didn't have natural grass, but we have, we have in a wonderful park. Uh, but yeah, I do my best and Sarah is doing her best to keep questions, comments, concerns. Disappointed tenants out of the mayor's offices and your council inboxes. So, uh. I have been begging and I have begged every, every user. And we have worked it out this year, but it is super tight, like. Super tight. So, yeah. And then I think the mayor had her hand up and then we'll skip through. I think, you know, the good news is most of the survey questions kind of lead us to the same type of discussion here. So I'm not too worried. We're not, we're a little behind on time, but. Um, I think we're okay. Yep, you're up there.
Sorry about that. Had to take a a quick, uh, city related call. Um, I just, you know, this is great and I'm, I'm really thrilled about, uh, the work that was done on the survey. So thank you, especially. Mayor pretend McHenry and council member Schaefer and Director Lenashevsky for all of your work pulling this together. Um, I think it was very well done and, um, you know, there's lots of great ideas and plans that are gonna come out of this. And I am a broken record in this, but I I want to make sure that we're also really making sure that if we're going to add a new capital project, that we have a. Full accounting of what it's gonna take for staff time and maintenance. And make sure that we can afford it, um, because one of my big fears and challenges as it stands today, as all know, is our staffing levels. Um, and that we're still having trouble getting day to day work done with our current staffing levels, um, and not having enough succession planning in departments. Uh, when there is a vacancy, it's a huge, huge challenge for our departments. Um, and so. Uh, I want to make sure that we're thinking about that and also discussing that with the public because that's the most important component. It's easy to build the projects. It's harder to maintain and have the appropriate staffing levels to take care of them. Um, so, um, not trying to be a datter, but just trying to make sure that we're also looking at things in a holistic way. Um, and being realistic about, um, our expectations. Um, as our parks grow and making sure that we're continually having that discussion about the need for extra staffing on that. So thank you.
Second question, um, recreational amenities provided within the park expansion should support which of the following uses? So we did active passive combo. Again. You know, leaving it as it is is a pretty low option. And I do, I do hear, you know. The opportunity, like what is the opportunity of this piece? This piece is different than a different piece, right? That's not immediately adjacent to fields already. So. I I do understand that. So the, these weren't surprising responses. Um, some of the active types of amenities were interesting. So dark orange is a high priority because we asked people to set their priorities on these, uh, types of uses. Uh, orange was medium priority and then blue low and then darker blue. We don't want so. Uh, the top three was a multi-use field, uh, fifty-two percent. That is a combo of orange, dark and light. Lighted sport courts. Fifty-one and then bike park. Um, when you read more of the finite detail, it's the like pump track kind of stuff. There were obviously some requests for, um, mountain bike facilities, but again, we may be able to accommodate those elsewhere. Uh, even currently. Um, and then kind of going over the lower request, the darker blue, that, you know, the blue side. Uh, and I don't think this is anything to do with baseball, but like. Specific batting cages. It sounds like fewer people would use those than, you know, obviously a multi-use sports field. So you have to look at that bar kind of. Um, not too negatively, but it just a choice on what was provided. Um, baseball softball field. I took that as like an exclusive baseball softball field, which I'm not sure we're contemplating anywhere really anyway. And then volleyball, interestingly enough, uh, was low, which I find used quite a bit as long as it's not raining, uh, even currently like at Perrigo Park. So. There you go for those types of uses. Some of the passive amenities, the same type of question. Prioritize. I I think the, a couple of points that I've heard, which we don't necessarily have yet, but we are gaining more of those amenities like in Toll Brothers is. Large public, like hangout spaces, picnic spaces, covered shelters, those opportunities are arising. And I think those are certainly placeable, you know, in this facility, no matter what it looks like, fully built out. Half-built out, integrated, however. So those are, those are all. Doable items, soft surface trails. Uh, I mean, I'm up at Big Rock quite a bit, certainly weekly for practice myself and. It's interesting, people will walk around the hardscape, but just as many will walk around the unofficial, unofficial trail on the perimeter. Um, so I I. I don't discredit that soft surface trails would be popular. Um, and soft surface can be gravel, hog fuel, you know, just not pavement. And then playground areas was playground and play areas is a high use. Uh, I think the combination for little kids running around while their siblings are, you know, at organized events on site are. Probably a real good driver for that. Some of the lower requests I find quite funny because, you know, we tried a couple of these with, uh, our sidewalk projects. So outdoor sports equipment gets a note. Another solid thumbs down. It's so funny. Uh, education signage, which I thought, you know, such an easily implementation of education signage and, you know, just things to read that was. Fairly low and then an amphitheater. I would imagine the amphitheater might be easily confused with how we present parks in McCormick. So, uh, made sense to me. Um, and then activities that would bring you to the park a lot more here and it went all over the board. But again, the higher ones. In order were family gathering, uh, walking trails and then youth activities and programs. And I think. Blending all that on a site is a, is a good goal and a, an achievable goal too. Low requests were senior programs, fitness programs and educational programs. So I. Survey, you know, it is what it is. These are, so that's kind of the bulk of the real click to answer questions. I did do my best to harvest inside the spreadsheet output. Pool. Hundred and twenty-five out of three hundred and ninety-three responses mentioned pool. Several of those were splash pad oriented at a minimum with pool, but I counted them anyway. So, uh, one twenty-five on that being, uh, swap. Is thirty-two percent. Of the survey respondents for that question. Cause it was only three hundred and ninety-three responses of the seven hundred and fifty-two total. So it's always interesting that not everybody answers every question. I always find that odd. Um, I was taught on a test to answer everything like, so, you know, that's me. Uh, more parking was a pretty heavy one, which I think everybody would agree and concur, uh, totally agree with. So that's important. Uh, pump track bike trail and then those courts were kind of the next level of of grouped together answers besides a bunch of random. Kind of things. So I will, I won't, I will trim the spreadsheet and Sarah will post. ASAP. Try to get that done before the end of the week, just so you can peruse the multitude of responses in the world's largest spreadsheet. Um, and there's some of the demographics, about eighty-three percent were nine eight oh one nine. And I think I talked to. Uh, council member McHenry a little bit on like, hey, did you manipulate any data? Because. I found nine eight one oh nine and they said they lived in, you know, Duval Hills or. North Hill. So they just, you know, keystroke error. So we, we tried to count as many of those as we could. Uh, five percent out of carnation. So eighty-nine percent very local. You know, to to us in the park. Seven, sixty-nine percent think they live in city limits. I didn't verify all those. Um, and the next one were kind of what neighborhoods and then, you know. They provided responses in contact for, for us reaching out to them in the future. And there was two hundred and. Boy, two, low two hundreds. So who gave their email address to like, hey, send us some information. So. And briefly before we kind of conclude and and just open up the discussion. We will work to finalize kind of. What this preliminary phase looks like, uh, certainly not locking us in into anything. I will, as I'm writing notes here, talk to our consultant Bruce D's. Probably can confer and discuss a little league, a couple of things and then try to provide. At least some layouts and costs. And we'll try to twist their arm and see if I can't get a full design of the higher use and maybe a. Combo to see just for. People's sake down the road. Again, this holds us to nothing, but at least gets us something to build on and understands maybe the price range. Um, between the two options, but I will see. I don't have a, we don't have a lot of contract and they were really working on one, but we'll see. And then, yeah, you know, next steps, we're, we would go after more grant for design. That is May. There will be some council action on that. If we are pre-selected to go to some next steps. So June, July, you'd see us again. If we've been pre-selected to go to the competition phase with RCL. Um, and then, you know, once we are happy and moving forward, we, we would hire a design consultant. Part of that would be creating the design and then, you know, continue to work with the community. I would imagine another, you know, some real outreach. Um, a share or two, to really hear, you know. To take the, you know, funnel it down, get the uses, understand are we really. Kind of big picture, how we're gonna treat this park versus our parks, um, and try to work that out. And then, you know, of course, looking for design, not design grants, but for construction grants, finalize designing, you could prepare for construction by. Oh, that's supposed to be twenty twenty-three. So I'll edit that before I put it in the folder. And that's, that is all I have on that. And I'm just gonna flip to kind of the layout slide if we have any. Kind of fleeting thoughts and just a couple of points too on these. Um, you know, one, obviously showing parking, which the consultant knew we had to integrate. Um, on any one of the sites, secondary access is pretty much a must. When you talk to, you know. Ourselves, fire who do serve that site for injuries fairly frequently and are asking me to try to make some improvements out there for. Speed control, uh, by the way. And then. You know, a little more crisp, final looking kind of pre-design thoughts, uh, parking fields. You know, integrating tree buffers and whatnot. You know, the opportunity is endless and I I think we heard it plenty that we kind of get one bite at the apple. So. How do we, how do we slice it up and share with everybody? So.
Well, thanks Director Lenashevsky. Um, we are a little tight on time, but you know, if there were any last, um, quick thoughts or questions. That would be okay if anyone else raised their hand or go ahead, uh, councilman Isaacson.
Yeah, with the current park, because, um, how are we doing for, I mean, mayor said something that. And I was kind of alluding to whenever I was talking about the type of facility and a cost. How are we doing with the current park that's out there? Are we in positive or are we black or red on maintaining that park from, we gotta raise taxes? Uh, how are we gonna do it? I don't know where we are on it.
So I would say technically you're operating in the red. So the rent yet doesn't offset the cost. Dana was here after, there is a bond proceeds that do pay some of this development back. We do set aside annually for turf replacement. Well, we do now with Miss Dana helping us. Um, so. There are those elements in place, but certainly not in the, in the black by business standard.
Council member Hook.
Yeah, I apologize if this is already discussed earlier, but, um. I just am super impressed by how the survey was complete and the kind of response you got. I don't know if we can sometimes learn from this in future surveys and. You know, if it's just, maybe it was just the topic, but I just, it just kind of blew my mind how many people took the time to, you know. Answer the questions. And so thank you for doing that.
Yeah, it was a great collaborative effort. I am, I am a tool used here. Other people can think up and dream big. I just. Try to get it done. So. Those, the council, uh, committee was very, very helpful. So we had a good time. Who is next?
Any, any other questions or comments? Uh, go ahead, council member Naplin.
Yeah, just super quick. Um, is the, when you post this, will this be posted for the public to see? I've been getting a lot of questions about it. I think the public.
I just totally forgot. Council member McHenry and I were gonna collaborate a little bit and then, yeah. Today it's like, hey, anything? Nope, we're good. Yeah. Totally forgot to post that survey. So, yeah, we will get that out. Like I said, it's just, I don't want to publish people's, not that it's not. Right if somebody wanted, but I, I wanted to trim some, some of the data. But, yeah.
Yeah, you might have said that earlier. I just want to make sure it wasn't just internally posted, it could be externally.
Well, I'll touch base. Well, I will coordinate with our consultant tomorrow. I have a. Meeting this week also with La League. Moving forward, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll chat and talk about next steps and I, I will try to. See what I can do to get a couple of options, although they only were providing one per the scope. So we'll, we'll see what I can create and imagine.
All right. Sounds good. Thank you. Um, so we'll move on to our next item, planning for use of ARPA funds with. Director Mason. And I just wanted to say, uh, Director Mason, don't feel like you have to rush. My item's really easy and shorter than twenty minutes. So if we don't get to it here, we'll just. Get it in the next meeting. So go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, Council Dana Mason, Finance Director. I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen. And thank you, um, to everybody who, uh, went into this spreadsheet. I hope I'm sharing the right one. We'll see you soon. Um, does everyone see a spreadsheet that says total word up to the left?
Yes.
Okay, fantastic. So thank you to everyone who put win and put in their projects into this spreadsheet. Um, there weren't any questions for Clark Newber. So I just had some time with her myself and, um, she's, I actually gave her this spreadsheet and she will, um, Clark Newber was providing this. At the sea, some free ARPA consultation work, um, through AWSD. So I gave her the spreadsheet. She's gonna go through everything just to make sure everything is eligible use of ARPA funds, but just at first glance, it appeared that. That it was. And then I just had a question for her whether, um. If, if the city uses ARPA funding on, um, on CIP, if more restricted resource, if we have to use. If we have to use restricted revenue like REITs before we use ARPA funds, especially if we categorize everything as revenue loss. And then we also had a discussion that once you categorize, everything is revenue loss, those other cat, other categories actually fit right under that. So, so it's revenue loss is basically just a big broad category that we can use for general government services. I hope that made sense. So, you know, our, our total, just to recap, the city's total award was two million, two hundred and sixty-five thousand. And to date, we've only spent twenty-seven thousand and that was on some, some COVID tests, some. Some COVID related hurt supplies. And then we also had some utility bills that we paid for some low income residents who were struggling because of COVID. So if it's okay with you, I'll just go through the list. You know, what everyone added. And then what we were thinking, if this works, is that you could, council could go in and just pick their top three categories, just to kind of narrow it down. And, and then, you know, say one, two, three, and then we'd add it up and just come up with categories that are getting the most support at the next meeting. And then we also wanted to talk about some summer stage expenditures that could be used. ARPA, where ARPA funding could be used to pay for them. And so one was more public art sculpture. Still the, a city facility improvements for community use to open and repair facilities. Build a community rec center with things like an indoor pool, gym, racquetball courts for everyone. But with an emphasis on facilities for kids to enjoy and help give them better physical and mental health options to stay entertained. Focus on the public works CIP project list with priority on projects that are already underway. Upgrade or fund a contract to upgrade fiber in internet connectivity. Fix the deteriorating riverbank and save sand blast. Taylor Park, I believe this was just fixing it in general. A disc golf trail expansion in McCormick Park, economic resiliency responding to the pandemic. I think that was the category. This project could build, bring visitors to the city and also provide a safe outdoor activity for social distancing. Community partnership project and requested by community and services. Could be partially sponsored by local businesses, open spaces and river corridor grants, a minimum passive recreation component. Some big rock ballpark expansion, an acquisition of additional property capital improvements, field expansion. That would bring revenue and economic development tournaments. I consider a splash pad for summer, safe outdoor walk, water activity, a larger covered area for summer programming. Also possible rent revenue, additional property because it could preserve open space for passive recreation. And then also be a partnership with King County and lots of grants available for this type of project. Electrical pedestals for Taylor Park in McCormick Park. Power at Taylor Landing over the farmer's market. Upgrade old Duval city plumbing, storm drain manholes, et cetera, to help reduce the burden on the city's freshwater processing. Another one that's in that same category, there's a lot of old pipe, concrete and old town, for example, to be replaced, not to mention missing curbs and sidewalks. I think really big and redo the signaling at the Wood Duval Bridge. Is there enough right away to turn the lanes at the end of the bridge? Would Duval and two hundred and third intersection or two, route two hundred, two oh three intersection? The community regularly identifies this intersection as a high priority. The bottleneck resulting congestion on Main Street is impacting local businesses and may deter visitors from coming to Duval, impacting economic potential. This intersection becomes the only route in and out of the city during flooding. Emergency response concerns daily congestion and flooding events. Installing speakers and sound system on Main Street. Upgrade renovate cities facilities. Investment in McCormick Park also comes to mind with an emphasis on features that provide play equipment, upgrading, upgrading gathering spaces and more events. Why don't we do something big in the fall? Which is so gorgeous in the valley. A park, trail and open spaces plan update. Summer youth programming, let's utilize our parks and facilities and provide childcare and outdoor physical activity for use. This could involve allocating or hiring staff to coordinate vendors for summer programming. Art YMCA, boys, girls clubs, sports camps. This will help families who have limited options for childcare and keeps kids off screens and encourage healthy active habits. I believe this program could be eventually self-funding, but would need help to establish sponsorships for low income participants. There are also, are there additional grants available for outdoor summer programming that can leverage ARPA funds applied? For example, we missed the two, two thousand twenty-two grant, but hopefully there will be more for twenty twenty-three and beyond. Bleachers for Little League and Duval days. Containers for storing items and location, I believe this was in relation, relation to summer stage. I've continued potty, porta potty support. Police staffing for events such as the rough run. New stage curtains, current or flannel and not able to be cleaned. Possible facade improvement investments, human services support grants. Financial support grants to citizens who have lost jobs or have had to quit jobs in order to overcome COVID. Challenges could be used to pay required bills such as mortgage, rent utilities, outstanding medical expenses. Pay off delinquent city utilities for those experience, experiencing COVID related hardships. Business relief fund, help fund renovations, help develop business plans that will help our small businesses recover from the pandemic. Tax relief, set of a fund to reimburse residents and or businesses tax paid to the city to those who are experienced or are experienced. Experienced or are experiencing financial hardships as a result of COVID. Possible federal taxes if possible. Fuel tax reimbursement program, mental health funding grants similar to what the school district has for kids. But this would be for anyone in Duval to help with the continued mental issues ongoing from COVID. Additional small stage sixteen by twelve and modules. So also can be used as a drum riser as well as a sound riser or as one six by twelve unit. Portable lighting towers. Stage risers to expand the mobile stage, more attractive fencing than the orange, orange snow fences. As a general statement, open to additional staff to get these projects done, particularly public works projects or where we are currently so dependent on contracting for outside services. Steve knows, I believe he needs another engineer, possibly an L, a limited term employee, depending on public works. Project pipeline and private, that's a tongue twister. Building cycles continuing. And note that the above could require additional staffing. I would want any additional staff positions to have a specific work plan to ensure ARPA funded planned projects receive the staffing. So are there, I mean, that's a lot right now. But at least to keep the discussion going. Are there any questions or comments?
I see a couple of hands up. I just wanted to ask really quickly though, Director Mason, online, shoot, what was it? The facade improvements one, line thirty-two. Oh no, yeah, thirty-two. My, one question I had on that is most often would be like frontage requirements as well. So if, if there was a business that triggered, you know, was remodeling to a point that triggered frontage improvements, it might, I don't know. Would that fit in with that category or would that some kind of grant program for that also be, oh, I see Steve has it and maybe he has the answer. Would that be a separate category? I don't know who could.
Outside of economic recovery? Is that what you're asking or?
No, I think two questions, maybe Councilor McHenry has. So facade improvements generally, I would say probably don't trigger frontage if they don't have it yet. Frontage is dictated by the, the code and I think it's a fifty percent increase in value is the threshold. So just finishing up and repainting and adding this, that and the other, probably not. But rebuilding like the Duval bed is proposing, it does trigger that. So, and your other question, I think if it did trigger it or somebody had that thought to improve it, then it probably would be eligible. Cause it's effectively public right of way as well. So I don't see a problem.
On our list. And then I had a logistical question, but I will go ahead and go council member Lengel and then Naplin since they have their hands up.
Okay, so I just wanted to clarify something when I put my really, really big idea out there, which was the one about dealing with the intersection at Woodville Duval Bridge. Actually, when I said that, I wasn't thinking about ARPA money so much. What I was really thinking about for that item was an earmark, a federal earmark. That we would go into with a partnership with King County, the state, possibly Monroe to deal with that bottleneck. So that's when my mind was really, really exploding and thinking, you know, there's, there's no way. Earmarks are designed to have massive impact. And if we had a real partnership with the other jurisdictions around it, I think, you know, we might be able to get the ball rolling on that. You just never know, but ARPA, it's probably not the best for ARPA. I was really thinking about federal earmark for something like that. I think everybody knows what an ear, what a earmark is, right? Or should I define it?
Go, go ahead and define it. That's a good, good help.
Okay, an earmark is a line item in the federal budget. That's what's happened now is earmarks are back where elected officials have. You know, what is, what amounts to sort of their own little fund to support unique public projects. And the nice thing about earmarks is number one, it's federal money. So it's, it's not restricted to. To any, like the state money is, but it's, but to get an earmark really requires a lot of partnership. And I've been involved in two or three earmarks. So we have to remember that our elected officials like to bring home something major for jurisdictions. And I think that, you know, getting a plan for that intersection with partnership. You'd have to have King County, you know, possibly Snohomish County, you know, everybody in on it to get an earmark.
Councilmember Naplin.
Yeah, I wasn't going to mention this, but now that Councilmember Lengel brought it up, I think I, I put that a similar item on the list. And obviously this isn't enough money to fix that intersection. And so in the same line of thinking, we need to start somehow. And you probably can't get an earmark just by some super vague idea. So it could be maybe the investment using ARPA money is. To get started in that process of investigating, finding partnerships. And I, I don't know, I just wanted to throw that out there. That some of these ideas, even if you can't do the whole thing, at least it would help us get started. So the real reason I raised my hand is it looks like it, we're looking for, we get to mark three things. I'm feeling like it's pretty early in the process to try to narrow ourselves down to only three items each. And so we really need, if we could choose a few more than that, and then we could start seeing some themes and then we could narrow it further. But it seems like it would be helpful because the list is so long and I don't think we're going to end up only doing three things. If we could have. A couple more.
Passed out.
Yeah, maybe five, I don't know. I'm not the expert on, on how best to do this, but I feel like narrowing it to only three so early when there, there's so many ideas. Yeah.
Rick, I see your hand up. I just wanted to chime in really quick because it's actually on this topic, because it's logistical. And I was thinking that what if at this level, you know, cause like, for example, if I chose one, two, three on lines forty-one, forty-two and forty-three. That's only like thirty-five thousand dollars. And, you know, so what if everyone ranked them HM or L? So like high, medium or low priority. And then you might get a more complete picture and maybe if people could at least try to use three H's, right? Those would kind of be their higher priorities. I don't know, like that was just one idea I had, but go ahead, Councilmember Schaper.
Okay, it took me a second to get unmuted there. I'd like that idea, by the way, the high, medium, low idea. Let's see, a couple of things going through this and in the, the one build of all two or three intersections, one of those. We need to be, I guess, aware of where we may be able to get funds from other places and not spend our, our COVID funds. I think there's some other items on this list, which has a good chance of getting funding from, from elsewhere. So we would be able to spend the COVID funds on, you know, perhaps something, you know, something else. The, the other thing, the thing that I, I think is really important with this, and I know two million dollars isn't, you know, isn't really that much in the big picture things. But I would love to see this money spent as an investment, as an investment for, for Duval, something that would keep, you know, keep on giving for, you know, for decades. To me, the biggest way or the best way to do that would be in the economic development area. Things that would help our businesses, especially our small businesses thrive and attract not only local. Customers, but just importantly, out of town customers back into Duval. I think that type of investment would be very forward, forward focused and have long-term benefits on. For, you know, for Duval. And that's it, thanks.
Thank you. Just want to check before I count, circle back to Councilmember Lengel. Did any other council members who haven't had a chance to speak yet have something to weigh in? Go ahead, Councilmember Isaacson.
Yeah, turn my video off because it was getting choppy and sad. I'm not sure if anybody else experienced that, but I'll turn it on real quick. It won't let me, anyway. Another idea for looking, if, if everyone wants to go down with it is like, we make it rank all of them like with a number one through ten. And then you can get an average that way, you know, high, medium, low is kind of hard to average out. If everyone wants to take that amount of time, but you get each one, you know, give them ones, twos, you know, not only the top ten, but one through ten, how it reads for you. Now, whenever we're cool, let's say you could take and actually then it'll pop out, you know, where it falls from one to ten for everybody. As far as you from low, low to high scale.
Sounds better and better, I keep.
That's awesome. Councilmember Lengel.
I was just going to say something about the businesses and. First of all, facade improvement programs can be very useful. So that's just to put that out there, but on some, I don't. I'm not sure that council members were all involved in the grants that we gave, the COVID grants that we gave to businesses last year. But. You know, there were some businesses, primarily restaurants at that time, that had the biggest losses. There were other businesses that really applied. And the other area where there seemed to be some real loss was in childcare support. But in terms of business losses, I mean, I don't really know now how much loss our businesses are really experiencing that from before. There was a period of time that it was changing and improving, just so people know.
Thank you. Councilmember Mercer.
Yeah, I, I was actually, a lot of my points got touched on, hence I was relatively quiet. But, but, you know, I agree with a lot of what is said, you know, the, the facades, the beautification projects, I do think they do a lot to. And we've talked about this at past council meeting, you know, a small investment can go a long way, particularly when it's done across multiple businesses or in conjunction with some broader planning or visioning. So, so, you know, that may be a place where we can. I'm trying to think of how you, how you said it, Rick, but you know, basically a plant a seed and sort of see it, you know, expand to, to some broader impacts. The other, you know, The other, you know, place where, at least for me, where there's interest and it ties back into the economic development is is some of the core events that Duval are associated with Duval, whether it's recurring events. And if there's investments that can be made in those areas, obviously, there's a lot around facilities, staging, lighting, that can be used year over year, that that frees up money, other other money from from rentals and things in the budget. But but, you know, I also think of something like our summer's farmer farmer's market. I've always liked that carnation sort of has that permanent place where they can sort of stage a summer market, but can be repurposed for other things on the off season. Because the the gathering places or community people spaces, they also add some vitality to a community in terms of pulling people together. So again, those would just be the two ways I'd think about it, the tangible, physical investments around economic development. And then those events where we're bringing people together and and essentially reinforcing the community that has a an indirect economic and and direct, I guess, impact.
Is there, is there a line that you would like me to add, Councilmember Mercer, to like for a specific project for the?
Yeah, and I'll take a look. I hadn't added it, you know, I I looked at the workbook and and I think Jennifer, you had some some little bit of laundry list category, but some of those sat in there and I felt bad about repeating them because I think you had some some investment in people spaces. But yeah, that was really the street one. I think the facade and beautification touch on the one ask, maybe something around yeah, community and vets, whether it's. I had to do a little thinking. I mean, the the one that, as I said, that came to mind specifically was around capital improvements around our farmers market. But I think there are other, a lot of the other investments in some of the the more seasonal events are really more around the staging, the lighting, the sound systems, and I think those were captured, Dana, but appreciate it. Director Mason?
Thank you. Councilmember Isaacson, I still see your hand up. I just wanted to check if you had something else or that was, oh, it's forgotten. Okay, Director Lynn Schewski?
Yeah, just a quick thought on listening to some of this, obviously categorizing it. But I wonder if it would help to set some program funds, for instance, facades. Would people be more inclined or less inclined to use it as a checkbox if they knew it was fifty thousand dollars as a program? Or two hundred thousand dollars or a million, you know what I mean? So maybe think about some some bookends to help guide that because, you know, painting the exterior of a building, you know, pick one in Old Town, call it thirty thousand dollars. You just painted the city hall, so we know that's approximately, you know, a real number. Signage, paint, other treatments to the building. I mean, it would be a program, it would be something somebody might have to manage, of course. And then there'd be some sort of process to facilitate who gets what. If you had ten people applying, you only have so many funds, right? So maybe if some of these programs, well, you guys can help guide too, right? It's it's your list, but do you look at the list and then put some programming in? If everybody likes it or dislikes it, or is putting some programming dollars in, help people like it or dislike it more, you know what I mean? Kind of tail wagging the dog here. I'm not sure which is the right way to go, but maybe that could help.
You definitely hit on something that I had been thinking about because, you know, like I said, for some of those items right there on the screen. Well, we could afford all of those within the, you know, amounts that we have for ARPA. So in some ways that helps, but some of these, you know, are ambiguous and and really just depends on how much money we want to put into it. So I would say, yeah, if there are items that you all see that might have some ballpark idea of funds that would make sense, because it's hard for us to always know how much would you need to put into a program to make it worth doing, right? If you spread like a few thousand around in a bunch of different categories, it's not effective. Mayor?
Thank you. And my apologies for having to go in and out tonight, but I may have missed it. But one of the things that Mayor Portem McHenry and I heard loud and clear in Washington DC at National League of Cities a couple of weeks ago is they want this money out the door and spent boosting our economy. So they really want to see projects. That is a big portion. They want to see staffing levels and projects. So just keep that in mind as you all are considering what to move forward and they're pretty, you know, they're, the message is not just that, but also spend it quickly. Because I think there is fear that moving into the next congressional cycle, that there's a potential that some of that that funding can be clawed back. And this is the biggest between ARPA and some of the other relief funds. This is the most investment directly in local government in cities that the federal government has ever done. It normally goes to the states and the counties for distribution, and most of the time, cities like ours aren't eligible. So they are expecting us to spend the money and use it wisely and make sure it has a positive impact in the community long lasting. So I apologize for missing most of the session tonight. And so if I'm repeating things, my apologies, but I wanted to make sure that I that if that didn't get shared, that you guys have that information as well.
Yeah, thank you. And Mayor, I wanted to not to put you on the spot. I haven't had time to follow up. I remember there was talk at NLC as well about states and counties getting some funds as well. But I wasn't sure, it seemed like maybe they'd be automatically putting it into some of their own programming rather than trying to unless you've heard differently, trying to also put some more into local cities and things with their projects.
There's actually, and I'm forgetting the name of the bill that allocated money. There are billions of dollars for cities and counties that will be coming available soon through grant programs. One example that they're doing is for, for example, transportation projects. There's going to be one application for multiple programs. So one of the things that they are doing is they're streamlining, but for cities like ours, it's going to be a huge challenge accessing that money just in general, because we don't have the staffing levels to do the applications and the work. So that is, that is one area where I think that Congress in their eagerness to help out and really make investment. That's one area of oversight that exists is that cities like ours don't have the existing staffing to go after the money that is there ready for us today. So that's one of the challenges. But there's also, you know, additional ARPA funds that have gone to the state. And in the federal package, there's money going. In general, the the programs are shifted and are more cities are eligible for funding than ever have been in the past. And I think of note as well is that the White House has dedicated people specifically to work with cities and local governments. And that's something that in my entire time in elected office, I've never seen. So this is, you know, with this and everything else coming forward, it's a huge opportunity. But our congressional delegation to also think about this is that our congressional delegation is going to look at what we're spending this on. And that's going to help guide some of their future funding, funding decisions as well. So when we think about it being strategic, they want to see projects built. They want to see boots on the ground with services, et cetera. And none of these ideas are are bad at all, but we were also strongly encouraged to make sure that we are going after working to spend the funds on their intent of the funds.
Thank you. Director Thomas?
Me, the mayor and council, one item that we've been talking about internally at administrative level and also with the mayor is possibly providing essentially a bookmark of revenue for our community events this summer. And so I think the mayor would would possibly like to bring that up at a council meeting, whether it's this evening or a future one for action. So we are getting to pretty close like Duval Day, Summer Stage and those types of things. And so I think if that's something that council's interested in and wants to put at least a placeholder or say not to exceed amount that authorizes and provides maybe some bumpers, I think the mayor would appreciate that as well.
Thank you, Director Thomas. That that is spot on. As we've discussed, ARPA for almost a year now. One of the things that I was really hoping that we could use the money for is to help underwrite our community events this year. So that they do not have to go out and beg for as much money as they have in the past for sponsorships. It's harder to get sponsorships right now. And I I feel that it's really important to make sure that these events are successful and as easy to produce as possible. And it's a huge investment in our economic development. If these events go off well this year, as everybody gets used to going out and about again, it's going to have benefits for more than just the event. We get long term benefits as we get new visitors to Duval. And historically, our events over the last six or seven years have really started to attract people from outside of town. And those people spend money in our town. So I I know that at some point somewhere, we had a rough estimate. But if council is not opposed, if people are interested in that idea, I would be happy to talk to each one of you individually and come forward with a dollar amount at the next, not to exceed at the next council meeting for hopefully quick approval. Thank you, Director Thomas, for reminding me of that one.
That sounds like a good plan. Director Mason, I just wanted to follow up with you. When would you like, are you going to email us when you want us to go in here and rank it? Do you want us to immediately do that? When would we need to do it by? And so on?
Thank you for asking. It would be great if everyone could do it next week, so we just have a little prep, you know, before the next council meeting, and then we can just keep it rolling and, you know, keep it at the top of the list.
Okay. Thank you. So it's six fifty. Oh, sorry, go ahead, Director Lannashevsky.
Sorry, a couple of the items, and again, depending on how high of a priority they become, and then when people think they might be delivered, there is a lot of lead time on a lot of items that are off the shelf. Just picking like the speaker system that is out there on the list, right, wrong, or otherwise, is a ten to twelve month lead time. So if we want to do other smaller things like bleachers and such, maybe in anticipation of like the Little League playoffs, that kind of thing, the sooner the better. So not to put pressure on you, you guys decide, but I'll be gone next week anyway, so.
Is there, is there a way, if there are really big lead times on certain ones, is it possible to add a little note there just as a heads up for us? Or because I don't know if that would change people's views on what we should use money for sooner. But just if it's easy, I don't want to put an extra column in there, anything like that. Councilmember Isaacson? Oh, that was accidental. Okay, if it's okay with you, Mayor, I'd like to just add the city council retreat item to either the agenda or, I don't know. I don't know, I could do it under my update if that's easier, but maybe we could just add it as an agenda. It's fine.
Why don't you go ahead and do it under your update?
Okay.
I think that'll be a perfect timing. Thank you.
And then Councilmember Isaacson, did you have a question or are you an accidental hand reader there? Sorry, could you try that one more time? It was breaking up.
Yes, broke up on my end too. I think the bandwidth.
Bad enough, you might want to hang up and call in again. Because we're not, we're not even picking up fifty percent of your words here. So if you could, just try try calling it again, because when you started, you sounded great and it's kind of gone downhill since then.
Or you, you could try one more time, because I think we'd like to take a little break in between the next meeting. Do you want to try again, John, really quick?
Yeah, I think if maybe some people turn video off, it'll help with the bandwidth as well. All I was going to say is the concerns with length of time to execute some of this and cost could hopefully, with us prioritizing like we're trying to do, hopefully we'll give city and staff the ability to just roll down the list. If they have a timeline like the mayor is alluding to, we need to get the money spent to to show it, not to lose it, but just to to expeditiously use the money. That's what we should be doing, and these are the things we prioritize. They just go down the list and and do it. And, you know, we shouldn't drag this out with, well, okay, we didn't get your top three done. Can we do your number four? It should be the no, just go to the number four because of time or cost, whatever it is. And and just keep going down and get it spent, and that's efficiency. And it will show federal funding programs that we are all about spending our money and getting things done that you asked and use it benefits you in the future when you ask for something.
Yeah, point well taken. Thank you for clarifying on that. That's a good point. With that, we're going to adjourn at six fifty-four, take a little break, and we'll be back at seven for the council meeting. Thank you. Uh, with that, we're gonna adjourn at 6:54, take a little break, and we'll be back at 7 for the council meeting. Thank you.
Looks like everyone has their mute on except me. Can anybody hear me? Okay, good.
Yeah, and while you're doing it, am I still clear now, or am I broken there?
Sound, sound good now.
Cool. I think it's a.
Why not just me before?
No, no, that was horrible. When Director Mason was gone, it was so broken up. I think it's a video, I think everyone on video bring, cuts up the bandwidth.
All right, well, um. I think we're just missing one council member. But we'll probably go ahead and just get started since we have a quorum that I see. Um. All right, good evening and welcome to Duval City Council Regular Meeting, um, of April 5th, 2022. My name's Amy McHenry, and I'm chairing the meeting tonight. Because Mayor Ockerlander is um, away dealing with an issue right now, so I'm gonna call this meeting to order at 7:02 PM. And Clerk, if you could bring up the uh, flag, please. Would you please uh, join me in the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America. And to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Thank you. City Clerk, would you please connect roll call? Councilmember Isaacson? Councilmember Isaacson?
President.
Uh, Councilmember Schaefer?
Here.
Mayor Broten McHenry?
Here.
Councilmember Mercer?
Here.
Councilmember Hope? Councilmember Napland?
Here.
Councilmember Lengel?
Here.
And Mayor Ockerlander? All right, thank you. We have a quorum. Uh, are there any additions or corrections to the agenda? Okay, seeing none, uh, is there a motion to approve?
Councilmember Lengel?
Second, Councilmember Mercer?
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, opposed, please say no. Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Um. Sorry about that. Um, so we'll now move on to public comment. Any members of the public who'd like to speak, please press the raise your hand icon, or press star nine if you're joining us on the phone. Individ- uh, sorry, Director Thomas, did you have something?
I apologize, I had to take a quick call, but we didn't, I'm not sure if you did it, because I wasn't listening. Did we add an executive session as well?
Oh, shoot, yes, I apologize. I had that on my notes, but I was looking at something else. Um, we do. Can we add an executive session to, I think it just goes to the spot on the uh, bottom part of the agenda, or did we need to move it to the beginning after the closed session?
It will, it will be during the same time. We'll go from closed session to executive session.
Okay, so Clerk, could you help me through this? How would we, do we just need a motion to go ahead and add that?
I mean, legally, you can just call an executive session at any time, and you don't, you don't really have to add it to the agenda legally, yeah.
Okay, so then we'll just add an executive session following the closed session under RCW 42 dot 30 dot 110. And about five minutes away for that one. Uh, Councilmember Lengel, did you have a question?
Yeah, I do. I want to make sure that I am connecting on the right Zoom. If we're leaving and coming back and. Are we staying on the same Zoom?
I think it'll be on the same link, yes.
Okay, so just we leave out and come back in?
When we go to that part, yep.
Okay, just wanted to be sure I did it right.
Okay, thank you again Director Thomas for making me not miss that. Um, okay, so back to public comment then. Uh, if anyone wants to speak, uh, just go ahead and raise your hand. You get three minutes, and if you're representing an organization, you can speak for five minutes. And we just ask that any comments related to public hearings we have scheduled be provided at that time on the agenda. Which I don't think we have today. Did we have anyone that you see, Clerk?
No, there's no one in the audience, um, and I have not received any written public comment to relay.
Okay, thank you. So now we'll move on to the cons- oh, sorry. We will now be moving to closed session pursuant to RCW 42 dot 30 dot 1404B to set collective bargaining strategy. So, we will, I didn't see at the time that we're away for that one. Um, Clerk, did you know how long we had set for that initially?
Um, so you'll, you've just read the closed session RCW, which is awesome, but then at this time, you'll also read the executive session. Thing, and then um, it's, it's up to you how long you think you need. We don't have a specified time on, on the agenda or anything.
Okay, so I guess, um, let's go ahead and we'll, we'll start with 10 minutes for the closed session, and then we'll also be going into executive session. Um, pursuant to RCW 42 dot 30 dot 110, and should be about five minutes away for that.
Hello, this is City Clerk Sarah McMillan. I would like to announce that the city council requires 15 more minutes of time for closed and an executive session. The meeting will reconvene at 7:37 PM unless extended further by the council. Thank you. Hello, it's City Clerk Sarah McMillan announcing that the council requires 10 more minutes for an executive session. And they expect to be back by 7:47 PM. Thank you.
Hello, it's City Clerk Sarah McMillan announcing that the council requires 10 more minutes for an executive session. And they expect to be back by 7:47 PM. Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, City Clerk Sarah McMillan. The Council requires ten more minutes for an executive session. Thanks. Hello, this is City Clerk Sarah McMillan announcing that the Council requires ten more minutes for an executive session. The Council anticipates this will be the final extension, but they may extend it for longer if necessary. And they should be back in at 8:42. Thank you.
Hello, City Clerk Sarah. Announcing that the council requires five more minutes for their closed session. Thank you. Hello, everyone. City Clerk Sarah announcing that the council anticipates taking just three more minutes in executive session. Thank you.
Sarah, why am I on here twice? Can you kick one of me out?
Yeah, maybe. Remove. There we go.
I think one of my personalities just left. Thank you.
Trying to see how quickly it could get back in the normal sessions. A few of you still beat me. I need to be faster on the clicker, I guess.
Do we have everyone back? I think we're just missing Councilmember Lengel.
Is Hoag coming back?
I don't believe so.
Councilmember Lengel is in the attendees.
Oh. Do you see her, Sarah? All right.
In Mayor Pretem McHenry, I knew we're approaching nine o'clock. Are we just going to do an extension and sort of?
I think we do our extensions at 9:30.
Or 9:30? It's 9:30? Okay.
I believe so, yes. Though it's been a little while since we had to do that. Okay, I think we've got everyone back now. So before we move to the consent agenda, I'd like to move to add to the agenda tonight. Authorizing the mayor to sign a settlement and released, and a release as discussed in executive session. Is there a second?
Second, Shafer.
All those opposed, please say aye.
Aye.
So you said
That was a double error.
Sorry about that. Clearly, we need to extend after nine, not 9:30. I'm already there. So all those in favor, please say aye. Thank you. And all those opposed, please say no. All right, motion passes. That'll be added to the end of the agenda, I believe, Sarah. Is that the order it would go in?
It's, it's whatever the council would like.
You can do it now.
Oh, we could do, yeah, yeah, let's go ahead and insert it right now then before consent, so we can just get it taken care of. And did anyone want to make a motion on that? Or I could just go ahead and move. I move we authorize the mayor to sign a settlement and release as discussed in the executive session.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And with that, now we are on the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda tonight?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. Okay, motion passes. Thank you. So we will be skipping the mayor's report since she is not here. And so then next up, we'd have King County Fire District 45 with Chief Erskine. If he's still with us. Oh, there you are. And thank you so much for your patience. We apologize for making you wait.
Oh, no problem. Good evening, everyone. I will gladly keep this short because I'm sure you all have other business to get on to. The month of March was pretty busy. Seventy-eight calls for service of those fifty-seven were in the downtown area. Year-to-date, we're at two hundred and sixty-one, which is just three shy of where we were last year at this time. I believe exciting news has been shared with all of you, and that's that our headquarters building will be open for public use starting April thirteenth, and I believe we have you on the agenda for the nineteenth, so we're looking forward to that. I appreciate Sarah working with me to get everything squared away, so we look forward to seeing you there. I did have a note for Councilmember Hoag. At one point recently, we had talked about helmets. Bicycle helmets, and I just was curious if that was still an item of interest. If someone could just maybe let me know, and I'll continue to work on it. Okay. We also met with Chief DeBach recently, and he shared some opportunities in the future, and I believe unless anyone has any questions on the report that was submitted, that's all I have.
Councilmember Shafer, did you have a question?
I'll see, just to let the Chief Erskine know, I am interested in the bicycle helmet since the county has repealed the helmet law on a county basis. My understanding is any city can, can create their own, own law, own requirement for bicycle helmets. Is that what you were referring to, chief, or was it something else?
I believe it was Councilmember Hoag that had asked if we still had a program. So I was, just wanted to revisit it, and but I believe we have some surplus, and so if we can partner in some way to, you know, help our, our residents, then we would gladly do that.
Okay, that'd be great. Okay, I see. So it was more program-related that you were talking with Councilmember Hoag about them.
Yes.
Now, that's good. That's good to know. It's good.
Okay. I will give you some information.
Something for the future Calvin for, for the council. Oh, no, I do have an important question. First of all, thank you for allowing us to meet in the fire station. And the second, related to that, do you have a fire pole that we can slide down?
No, we do not, unfortunately.
Well. It is one of those.
Maybe if we rebuild, or, you know, get a new building at some point in time, then we'll have you all down for that.
Okay, great, great.
Were there any other questions or comments for the chief? All right. Well, thank you again so much for your patience and giving us your update tonight.
Certainly. Have a good night.
Thanks, you too. All right, I believe we will be skipping the police department report tonight. And we'll move on to committee, council committee reports. And first up is finance and administration. I guess I can just give a quick update. I think Councilmember Naplin and Lengel, we met for, was it four or five hours? We were in the finishing stretch of procurement policy, and it was a lot of fun. And we got through a lot of it, and we're close. I think we need to have one more meeting about like that to honestly get it done, and to a point, you can come back. And then I believe this week we have what's called our normal committee meeting, where I haven't checked the agenda on that, so, all right. Then we have Land Use Committee. Was there anyone who can make an update or had an update for that, or? Maybe not. That might be, is Councilmember Hoag the chair of that committee?
She is.
Okay.
I don't have my notes in front of me. I'm sorry.
Okay. All right, so let's move on to the Public Safety Committee. Councilmember Shafer.
Yeah, just, just real quick, let's see, the Public Safety Committee voted Councilmember Shafer's the next chair for the committee. The, and the PSC, the PSC also decided to have a reoccurring meeting the last Tuesday of the month, eleven to twelve. As far as recruitment's concerned, recruitment head is progressing well through the academy. Officers Gunhill and Gerabee, or Gerabeay, have started their second month of field training and progressing well. And the And the sergeant assessment was at the end of last month, and since the chief isn't here, we won't be able to ask him exactly how well that, that went. Police Administration Specialist Position, that is in progress. And the chief noted that the process and plan for selection must be approved by the civil service first. As far as twenty twenty-two work plan, the chief asked if the council would like a plan, like a work plan presentation that they've done in the past. I responded, yes, very much. I think everyone on the council would be interested in that. And chief also mentioned he was going to, at some point in the future, introduce the new officers to the council. I think that'd be a terrific, terrific thing to do, see him either face to face or at least on, on video. So, and the work towards getting some sort of mental health assistance with the police department is still, still in progress. That's it.
Go ahead, Director Lenashevsky.
Knowing your chief is a diligent fellow, if you are okay, I will share. We've been working on the locker rooms at the police station.
Oh, great.
Screen. Lower my hand, share my screen. So what you might see on my screen is a layout of the police station. Okay, so this room in this area here is the actual booking and pre-booking room. So you have walls drawn in as proposed. We have one, two, and three existing cells that never get used, so. The thought was to put the women's locker room on this wall. That way, there is no co-mingling instead of trying to squeeze into this area. So right now, they'll be working on costs. It shouldn't be anything out of what we were already expecting, and it will function better than kind of a shared space, so. That is what's going on behalf of ARC and the on-call with them to help out with the locker room.
Great, thanks for sharing that.
Yes, Mike's been very into the process, so, or Chief DeBach, I should say.
Yeah. Thank you. So Public Works, had, Steve, has the new committee met yet or not yet?
No, the first meeting will be next week. In my absence, Larissa will be there running over a few things, kind of doubling back on a couple items from tonight. Sorry, the scanner radio's on. And, yeah, just normal meetings are the second Wednesday of the month, right? Yeah. So I believe we have use my fingers, I got Lengel, Schaefer, and Isaacson. But you should see an agenda tomorrow.
Awesome. So on our ad hoc committees, we have council procedures update, code of conduct. Since Councilmember Hoag, who's the chair, is not here currently, I'll just share that we did meet. And we just discussed the hybrid meeting procedures. And at a future meeting, probably at our next meeting, I think our clerk will have a few options, a couple options put together on what we were able to work through, so look forward to that. And then for human services grant applications. I believe Councilmember Lengel and Isaacson, if you're able, I think we might have lost one. Did we lose John? Oh, no, he's still there. So I think we have on the schedule tomorrow, correct? At nine thirty, so hopefully you have a chance to look at the links and the scoring, and we'll be discussing all those applications. All right, so that's it on committee reports. Are there any council members who wish to speak tonight? Go ahead, Councilmember Naplin.
Excuse me. I just wanted to ask when the expected date was for our facilities to be open for the public to rent them, specifically our indoor spaces like the depot, Visitor Center.
Yeah.
And the rec center.
Director Thomas, did you want to take that, or Director Lenashevsky?
Yes, thank you. Steve Lenashevsky, Public Works. So the, let's today, April five. So April four, the depot has been available. It's kind of a soft launch, just getting back into the swing of renting. We do have staff in the Rose Room underneath, of course, the Visitor Center, so we are planning to vacate that by May one, so we'll be out of there, and then we will work on opening that May one. Again, seeing how things are going through Sherry. Sherry's handling those calls and requests, so we're working on that. And I think those are the only two buildings, right?
What about the rec center?
We haven't rented that for a lot of years, and we had contracts years ago. They hadn't worked out so well, and long story short, we haven't. So we are moving staff to that in the interim here as we prepare for remodeling and moving other folks around while we're still upstaff and trying to come out of the pandemic and understand how we're gonna do some office sharing and virtual work and whatnot. We're pretty packed in in places, so right now we're working on getting into that space. For some summer. Normally, the summer helpers have gone there in the lower area for their lunchroom and break room since it's pretty overcrowded.
Okay, thank you.
Any other counselor? Oh, go ahead, sorry.
I was gonna say, we will advertise that. We're just trying to break it in since we have a small amount of groups who are already hoping to use it, so.
All right. Any other council reports tonight? So I'll just use mine really quick. I'm gonna keep it briefer than I would have in the cow because I know we're already running long tonight. We're just gonna kind of recap our retreat that we had, so I'm gonna keep that brief by saying one of the main things is in our committees, as the new committees meet, make sure and elect a chair, obviously, that's the first thing. But also, we had talked about developing a description of the committee and what they do. So remember to keep that at some point on your future agendas for your committees. Our clerk, Sarah, and Director Thomas both worked on putting together some great notes from our retreat as well, and so we'll be sharing that at a future time. And then I also just wanted to let you know what I'm thinking for the upcoming retreat, probably in the May or June timeframe. This would be the one where we're meeting with the directors. I'd like to bring them to the table, and I'm gonna be reaching out to them and seeing what kinds of things they would like to talk about within their departments, as well as asking you all what kinds of things you would like to talk about, about their department, so that we can just have a really great, high-level discussion. And as we go in, it wouldn't be at a level of like budget presentation for those departments. That's too early. I just think this would be a good point for us to get together and really get in depth into those departments and talk about some different things. So that's what I'm thinking, probably would also look at getting a facilitator. That way, I can relax a little bit and participate a little bit more. And so, yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll keep evolving this and talking about with each of you. If there's any other ideas you have, I had imagined we might also be looking at procedures again in that meeting possibly, or I don't know, we can think of some other topics. So nothing to decide now, just if you come up with something you'd really like to hit on in the next retreat, let me know so that I can get that planned as soon as possible. All right, so now we're on to the creator reports, and I think that's with Director Thomas.
Correct. I'm gonna, I'm gonna fill in until you are filled up, hopefully sooner than later. For the record, Laura Thomas, King Development and Helper of Administration. So I will share my screen really quick. This, you know, moving forward, I, my philosophy is this is gonna be more of a group effort because I think then council will get better information from departments. Not everybody knows everything about each of the departments, so we'll go through as quickly as possible. I do have four slides. It's not super meeting, but it's, it's a little bit. Our first in-person council meeting is scheduled and ready to begin on four nineteen, so I'm hopeful that council is also ready to return. So we do tentatively still have it scheduled for the nineteenth. One thing that we would be hopeful for is that you can communicate with the clerk to let her know that you're gonna be either in person or you're gonna be going through the hybrid, which will be ultimately likely at home or another location. Our city council meeting, train, et cetera, calendar has been created by the clerk, so that will get shared with you fairly soon. We looked at it internally, and it looks fantastic. I think it'll help keep us better organized. Facility opening update, yesterday was the first full day that we were open, so we were really excited about that. I think we've had four or five visitors over the last two days. Council and Planning Commission again will be both meeting up at the fire district, so we will start Planning Commission there as well. City Hall and police, their hours are Monday through Thursday, ten AM to two PM for both offices. Friday is eight AM to noon for City Hall only. PD will be closed on Fridays. Just a quick update on finance and police job recruitment. Finance interviewed one qualified candidate, and we have drafted an offer letter of employment. That's going through the mayor for consideration right now. The Police Administrative Specialist Position closed on the thirty-first. We had fifteen applicants. Oral boards are being scheduled for the eighteenth and nineteenth of April. Two candidates participated in the police department sergeant assessment on March twenty-ninth. The third candidate withdrew. Candidates were then interviewed by the chief of police on March thirty-first. The list will be certified by the Civil Service Commission on their next meeting on April sixth. Once this is complete, a final candidate will be selected, and a background will be started. The Duval Cultural Commission is gonna have its first meeting since literally September of last year. That will take place tomorrow in hybrid mode at the Public Works Conference Room at five fifteen, so we did issue a notice for that. It is a public meeting as well. The Housing Needs Assessment has its first kickoff meeting with the consultant, actually tomorrow. We are looking towards having Tammy Kellogg, who is a consultant, to tentatively discuss a scope of work for arts facilitation at the next meeting. We're hopeful it'll be the nineteenth. This was an administrative task, and so if we can pick it up in the meantime, we will. Our goal is to do that. We do have a draft scope of work. And so I think we can prepare it for the meeting on the nineteenth. The city did receive its Tree City designation, so we're really excited about that. The city applied for an annual port grant, and it's a continued partnership with the Savers Snoqualmie. I did email the council today that the application that we submitted. Our printer replacement is in process, so we have new printers that are being deployed throughout the city at this, the end of last weekend, this week. A quick Open Gov update. We're obviously still in train implementation. The budget module is currently under development, and training implementation is expected in May and June. Our citizen services is really close to implementation, so we're excited about that. And obviously, council will receive an overview and training as modules are implemented. Community development. So this is a new statute that just came out, so I wanted to just let council and the community know. EV charging stations are now required for new office manufacturing and multifamily construction. And ten percent of all stalls will have EV charging stations, so welcome, welcome to the world moving forward. So it'll be interesting to see how that rolls out because we have a couple of commercial developments that will be coming through along with potentially multifamily as well. Republic Works on-call contracts, these are citywide, are posted and open until April nineteenth. We hope to have new contracts issued before the first meeting in June, and I want to do a huge shout out to both Steve and our Public Works Group, who really took that on and got that issued. All on contracts are set to expire by the end of June, so we really want to get that completed and not have to roll over any more contracts. ARC will be attending the meeting on April nineteenth to discuss the assessment organizational and discussion in the facilities and master plan projects. Steve will be out of the office. But I will be prepared to be present at that meeting. Asset optimization discussion. Facilities and master plan projects, sorry, I repeated that. Parks are very busy, of course. You know that it's that time of year when they are high maintenance. Just because they're starting to grow. Parks Plan, we have discussed this a little bit internally and with a couple of our council members. Our Parks Plan is out of date, and we're not able to recertify it. So we will be coming back at a future meeting to discuss what our options and opportunities are in a schedule and estimated cost to update that plan. We've worked with Waste Management to redeploy garbage cans scattered around town for walkers. Public Works Crew, they are working on cracked ceiling roads, replacing stop bars and crosswalks. Park crews are going back to their four-ten's Monday through, sorry, Friday through Monday. Added French and curtain drain at the dog park. And improving access to permit counter at City Hall, so that would be the door string landing and ADA ramp. I know it was a little bit long, but we're just trying to provide a bit more information to council. If there are any questions, let me know.
Councilmember Schaefer. You're muted.
Not a question, just to thank you for the update. I, I think, I think this is great. I think it's nice to see, you know, all the accomplishments, both ones we know about and maybe a few we didn't, didn't actually know about as well. So terrific. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, yeah, thank you. Just want to echo Councilmember Schaefer's comment. It's always really nice to be so in the loop and just a great summary of everything going on, so thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have a couple proclamations. For the sake of time, since we're running late, does council want me to read through these? I don't know. The other alternative is maybe to summarize what they are. Any strong opinions one way or another?
I, I, I read the proclamation, so I, I'm okay not reading them here.
Okay, so we have a, I'll just summarize really quickly. We have a proclamation for Arbor Day for this year. Proclaiming that April twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two is Arbor Day in the city of Duval. And urging all citizens to celebrate it and support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And then our other proclamation is for Sexual Assault Awareness Month, proclaiming that this month, April twenty twenty-two, is Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And urging all citizens to take action to prevent sexual violence by standing with survivors and committing to safer future for all children, young people, adults, and families in our community. And our next item on the agenda is a public hearing. Hold on, let me find it here. So we have a public hearing for temporary use duration. Ordinance one two nine seven, I believe. So the public hearing for this matter is now open at nine seventeen PM. Really quickly, clerk, should we go ahead and motion to extend the meeting now, or do you think we have enough time to get through?
Not sure how long Laura's presentations might as well. Just do it now. Why not? It's not a big deal.
Would somebody like to make a motion to extend the meeting, just so that we don't have to interrupt the?
Motion to extend the meeting.
Councilwoman Isaacson, second.
Hey, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. All right, motion passes. All right, so the public hearing is open. Does staff have a report at this time? It looks like Director Thomas does.
Yes, we have a pretty short presentation, just a couple of slides. As, there we go. So we did pass ordinance twelve ninety-seven about a month ago. And this is really just a redo of two previous ordinances that repealed two policies, and this is essentially during the pandemic. They're part of our temporary use duration policy, and that's located in Duval Municipal Code fourteen fifty-two oh two oh D and E for six months. The repealed language is in your staff report, but it is also listed here. So these are the two sections that were repealed by the ordinance, and that is basically the days, the length that we would allow a temporary use to, to be allowed in general, and then either with or without a conditional use permit. And so we'll, you know, we recommended, and we've passed an ordinance to maintain that for the six months. The interim control will expire on eight fifteen twenty twenty-two. We do not expect it this time.
The interim control will expire on 8/15/2022. We do not expect at this time to renew that. I think what we may want to do is maybe work on some, on a policy that would be more consistent with the building code. But in general, our policy is consistent, you know, regionally. And temporary uses are not meant to be long term. We continue to monitor any temporary uses and evaluate them about every 30 days by going out in the field. That was one of the comments that came from council. I believe the first and second time that we passed this ordinance, which is just to keep an eye on the temporary uses because they're not necessarily there to, to be there long term. Look, this is the next item I have, sorry about that. So that is the conclusion of my report. There is a report within the council packet that gets entered officially into the record, and those include the exhibits for the policy and for the ordinance 1297. Thank you, Councilmember McHenry.
Thank you. So are any of the members of the public wish to speak concerning this topic, please now press the raise your hand icon or star nine if you're joining us on the phone. Before speaking, please state your name and address for the record, and if you're representing an organization, the name of the organization and your position. Individuals have three minutes to speak and representatives of organizations will have five minutes to speak. I don't believe I saw anyone. I don't see any attendees. So with that, city clerk, is there any written testimony to be provided?
Well, I've received no written testimony.
Thank you. Does staff have any closing comments? Okay, I will now close the public hearing at 9:21 p.m. Thank you. Next on our agenda is, we have no unfinished business, so we're going on to new business. AB 22-20 ordinance amending utility low income discount with Director Mason.
The council, Dana Mason, Finance Director. We'll go ahead and share my screen. And I'm here presenting the ordinance amending low income utility discounts. So for just a little recap, this concept was introduced at the Council of Whole of the whole in February. Discount options were presented at the council meeting in March. And where council asked the FAC to review the options and make a recommendation. And the FAC met just a few days later and came up with the following option. So the recommendation is to change the current discount structure, which is in the table on the left from three tiers to, or three levels to two levels. And increase the discount for those who qualify as very low income from 15% to 40%. So the 10% would remain the same for those who qualify for the HUD had low income. And then the city uses the Seattle Bellevue had low income or had income limits as its criteria for the discounts. The FAC also wanted, here's the recommended option, which would provide an additional 13,400 in utility bill relief for the city's utility customers. If council wanted to go lower, we've got an option two that would increase the second tier by 30% instead of 40%. And that would provide $7,300 additional in utility relief. Or if council wished, we could go a little bit higher and change that low income tier to 15% from 10%. And, and keep the 40, the recommended 40% very low income. And that would provide an additional 14,600 in utility relief. And that is it. Are there any questions? Or comments?
Go ahead, Councilmember.
Yeah, I just, I was just going to say that it's in the human services grant applications that we will be discussing tomorrow. There were several agencies that did mention the, you know, the, the ongoing need for utility assistance, so it was interesting to see that and seems consistent with the recommendation.
Go ahead, Councilmember Nappel.
I just wanted to thank Director Mason for helping us with this. I'm pretty excited that hopefully we can get it implemented and let the community know that there's you know, an additional discount and make sure that everyone who needs this knows about it. And anyway, I just really appreciate the work that Dana put into this, or Director Mason, excuse me.
Any other questions or comments for discussion? Is council ready to make a motion?
I guess I'll make the motion. I have a motion to approve. I don't have, I can't do the, I only have one screen. So is it Agenda Bill? I should have written it down.
It's AB 22-20.
Okay, AB 22-20, utility discounts.
I second it.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
Okay, motion passes. Did you want, clerk, did you want to do a roll call vote on that, just so that you have it, or were you able to discern who voted yes and no?
Um. Was it Councilmember Isaacson?
I believe so.
Yep. Councilmember Isaacson, Sydney.
Okay.
Works.
Thank you, motion passes. Next on the agenda is AB 22-21, resolution approving revised consolidated fee schedule with Director Mason.
Hello again. So with, with the passage of the, the change in fee or a low income structure for utilities, some changes have been made to the fee schedule and that's council was provided with a fee schedule with changes and then the revised fee schedule, so you could see the differences. In addition to that, a $3 monthly fee for duplicate bills has been added to cover postage, envelope, printing, etc. For duplicate utility bills that are sent to tenants. There was also some clarification on fees for public records. There was a removal of a duplicate tents canopy and temporary membrane structures fee. And then there was also some definition clarification for single family attached, detached and multifamily housing. And this will, you know, as we, as we change fees and discover fees and code and you know, we may be bringing the fee resolution back from time to time throughout the year. Are there any questions or comments?
Councilmember Nappel.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask really quick, is on the the single family versus multifamily, is that the definition we have been using, and so we're just making sure it's clear? But that's what we've been doing all along.
Director Thomas?
Yes, that's, that is correct, but we are going to be updating the definitions to be more clear. And it's part of our code amendments that are going to be coming forward later this spring. Because they're not super clear, we, we should follow more of an approach that's more, I'll just say, building code related for single family, attached and detached. We have a strange, wonky definition system that, that needs updating.
Okay, and then the one area I didn't see that updated was for the school impact fee, which has been sort of a topic of conversation in the past about how do you define the distinction between single and multi for school impact.
That's a great question. We did not update that because every year the school district has the opportunity to define their own methodology for single family and multifamily.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Is council ready to make a motion on this tonight? Go ahead, Councilmember Nappel.
Sure, I move to approve Agenda Bill 22-21, approving the resolution amending the city's 2022 fee schedule.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Okay, motion passes, thank you. Next on our agenda is AB 22-22, contract for engineering design and 142nd Street sidewalk project with Director Lenishewski.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Steve Lenishewski, Public Works. We do have a couple other folk, folks on the screen tonight. Larissa, who started this process is on here. She'll be talking to you next about a couple riveting topics, but your, your newest project manager, Ben Wrestler, is on. He does have an IT situation, but he is on his phone, so he probably won't speak much, but he wanted to at least be around for the item. So the item is the 145th or 142nd Street sidewalk project design contract. Briefly, this has been in process for a long time. We have been successful candidates on a grant from our friends at King County HUD. We did solicit through MRSC and try to follow the new processes, which aren't necessarily adopted yet, but making good on an attempt to get things as current as possible. We actually went a little over based on financial thresholds and went out to 10 consultants. Did our best to find MWDB agencies and re-received one response. So with that said, it is Pace who did apply and submit the RFQ. We went through, invented that group out. Ben has been handling that, that contract and that negotiation. And time is of the essence. The amount of the project design where is that sheet? Sorry, just skipped to it. Is estimated at 69,800. We had estimated under 50,000 for that, but market conditions and timing have put us where we are. We don't believe it's that far out of line with the project in whole. Hopefully, the CAP table in the Agenda Bill as well as the documentation provided in the packet was helpful for folks, including the scope of work. With that said, we do have pretty fast timelines, or Larissa has tried to work on some extensions. We are supposed to be designed fairly quickly and out to construction by, before the end of the year, so very ambitious, but we will work and get that done. Any questions, comments, thoughts? Councilmember Nappel.
Councilmember Nappel.
Alright, this will be quick. I remember when this has come up in the past, it was really important to council to make sure there was some level of community involvement for those impacted. And so I just didn't see that in the scope of work, that there was any community outreach in the process of design, so I just, maybe we're handling that internally, I'm not sure.
Yeah, based on the cost and discussions with Ben, who's handled that plenty in the past, it is listed on Pace's scope and fee as exclusion. So not that we couldn't pay to have them assist, but I think, you know, Ben's more than capable of doing that. They'll be able to help us with documentation, but yeah, we talked about the outreach being probably internal based on the funds being over what we had thought already, so.
Okay, so I just want to make sure, absolutely that will happen. There will be outreach to the community.
Yeah, I advise Ben listen to a certain council meeting to hear it from the, from the horse's mouth, so. Or Larissa, I can't remember the timing. She's smiling, it's probably her, so.
I think it was Councilmember Lengel that's brought it up a couple times, so.
I wanted them to hear it from the meeting.
Perfect.
We, we did get a quote from them, so if we need their assistance for the meeting, we can add it in. But for right now, I'm just going to handle it myself.
Nice to meet you too, Ben, thank you.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yeah, yeah, I just wanted to clarify for my, you know, for my understanding, and I guess the rest of the councils. This is, this is really the phase one, the first half of the project. Is that right, Director?
Yeah, I can throw a quick screen shareup.
That'd be great. I think that'd be, that'd be good for us all to, to see. I, I did look at your, your packet, so I, but just wanted to
Yeah, I'm zoomed in a little bit. This is 142nd Place, this is 278th, so phase one is ending at that intersection. And then the second phase connects 275th to 278th.
And when do we expect the second phase? Is that a next year project, or what do you think?
Depending on financing, you know, we can always go after more funding. HUD has that. We won't always be, you know, granted our award. But we, we can do our best to fit it in as quickly as possible, but I do know Larissa is here, so maybe she, if she has anything to add with her early discussions with HUD, since she was involved, really, I'll put her on the spot.
We hadn't talked to them about getting any funding yet, but we can always find out the next funding cycle and go ahead and apply for it.
That sounds good. Yeah, yeah, I'd be, I'm excited to get this done, and I'm, I'm more excited to see a complete sidewalk there because as most of us know, there's actually not a sidewalk on either side of the street for that whole stretch from 182nd to 275th. So it'll be a nice, you know, a nice thing for walkers, but a nice safety feature for kids riding their bikes and things like that as well.
Any other questions or comments?
Oh, sorry. I almost forgot. And let's see, any of you Public Works folks can help me out with this question, but I know I've mentioned that, you know, the safety factor of that intersection right at 278th. Where it crosses 278th, that's part of this project, I assume, is that correct?
That's where we're terminating, so we'll look at the configuration and how we marry in from 142nd into 278th through the very tight S curve.
Excellent, excellent, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If council is ready for a motion tonight, just a heads up, we would need to first have a motion to suspend our rules on this item.
Yeah, Mayor Proten, we didn't confer or confirm with Mr. Kenny, but we have talked about this plenty. I'm not sure it warrants that, but we certainly could do that just for safekeeping.
Okay, I saw it on the Agenda Bill, that's why I pulled it out.
Yeah, we didn't get to it, so it is there, so better safe than sorry.
Is council ready to make a decision on this tonight?
Yes, at least I am.
Did you want to make a motion, or are you looking?
Well, I was trying to find the bill number.
It's 22-22.
Okay, I finally found it. Yeah, it's going, it's going back. Let's see, first of all, Steve, you weren't suggesting that we need to get the lawyer's approval before this, or no? Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood.
If you want to make the motion to suspend, then we're safe, so it's fine.
Okay, okay, so I move that we pass AB 22-22, contract acceptance for the Northeast 142nd Place sidewalk improvement project.
Second.
Hey, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. All those opposed, please say no. Okay, motion passes. Our next item is Agenda Bill 22-23, resolution adopting transportation improvement plan for the 2023 to 2028. Up for just discussion with Director Lenishewski.
Thank you all again, Steve Lenishewski, Public Works, and I will be handing this off to your Assistant City Engineer, Ms. Grundell, to walk you through the annual TIP.
Thanks, Steve. Good evening, everyone. I'll share my screen really fast. Hopefully you can all see it. Okay. So it's time again to bring the six-year TIP update to you all. We'll talk about the TIP requirements briefly, the TIP list. The TIP changes to The TIP changes to the list, a summary of changes, and then our schedule for adoption. So TIP requirements, they're required by the state to adopt annually a six-year TIP plan by July first. So we're actually ahead of the game this year, which is really nice, so we're hoping to get a a public hearing in in the next couple months so that we can adopt. Projects presented are supported by the transportation element of the city's comprehensive plan and the transportation plan. They identify top priority projects, but on the list, they're not in order. They're in order of map identification. It allows us to get grant funding. It's typically need-based with how we prioritize projects and also looking at coordination with other projects, overlays, water main projects, things like that, where we can, you know, do more than one thing at a time. So here's a a snip, couple slides of the snip of the TIP list, which was included in your packet and the staff report. And a new map kind of showing all of the projects. It's a little zoomed out, so it's hard to see, but there's the intersections. And then green are the minor widening and reconstruction improvements, and the blue are new roads and major widening or reconstruction. So a couple of changes, M three was completed, and that is this section down here that goes through the ridge at Big Rock Development Phase Three and Four. So it's technically a top done, but we're removing it from the list because it wasn't on the TIP list for toll, so they don't get transportation impact fee credit for it. It wasn't a part of their agreement, so we're just removing the project for that. There are a lot of partially completed projects from other developments within the community. First Avenue from sixty five degrees, Northeast one forty third has a few developments that are doing just their side of the improvements for sidewalks and road widening. So there's a couple of projects listed there, and then Toll did improvements to the to a section of Northeast Big Rock Road, so just a partial. So those will remain on the list. And then our description of our projects, these are the the road lane miles, the sidewalks and in feet, any paths and bike lanes that have been completed. Completed projects are the dark gray and the the ones that are still in black are ones that are planning to be completed within the planning period. So our our schedule for adoption, we went to planning commission. I believe that we're getting a recommendation from them, but it might not be necessary as we're working with the community development to kind of figure out what is required from them, but we still went to them. We took it to the Public Works Committee on March ninth. We're here talking tonight about it. We can we'll come back May third. We were planning on coming back for more discussion, should there be any? And then hopefully hold a public hearing after that with city council decision by June and then adoption by July first, sending it to Washdaw. Anybody have any questions?
Go ahead, Councilmember Schaefer. You're muted.
Thank you. The intersection, Wood Woodville Duval Road and two oh three intersection, I know it's on the on the list. I appreciate that. I saw it was was there for like two million, which, you know, I guess is a lot of money, but I'm wondering if that's enough to do what we need to that intersection. We've talked about ways and I, you know, I I know nothing's decided yet, but potentially a roundabout there or, you know, widening of 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 the turns and things like that. The two million dollar estimate, is that a kind of a swag on our part or any any thoughts on that?
So it is, and it's actually based on an old methodology, older methodology, so it's twenty seventeen dollars as well. So it would definitely be inflated should we ever go through with the project, but there are there's a huge Excel that we have that has specific things that are built into the project cost, and some of them are kind of a wag. But if that it gets us to a good starting point, once we would have an actual project and have a defined scope, we would obviously bring back a a better engineering estimate. That would likely be more.
Yeah, well, almost, yeah, almost certainly. That's that was what I was thinking. The the thing that we previously discussed there, it's a cherry, the just just north of there is where Cherry Valley Road branches off, which kind of contributes to the whole chaos of that, you know, of that area. I assume, or at least I hope, that's part of that project to do something with the Cherry Valley Road as well.
That intersection is is not part of the intersection for the Woodville Duval, Virginia.
Okay, yeah, maybe we should consider a separate project for that then. Or white or or broadening of the Woodville Duval Road project, one or the other, because I think that that branch there is also a major safety hazard where, you know, you can't a a truck can't even make a right turn on two oh three without swinging out into the, you know, the the other lane. We've all seen, we've seen that, so something something needs to be done there as well.
Yes, there are. There are other things that we can do to try and improve flow there. We are aware. We talked to a lot of the a lot of the trucks that come that are businesses further down Cherry Valley Road, so we we are well aware of it. It's just looking for a a solution that fits everything.
Sure.
That works right. We do have Third Avenue is a truck route. So going to Third Avenue and then going down Stevens for some of those bigger trucks that can't maneuver. You know, there's different opportunity for travel paths through the city, which is why we classed. We did classifications for roads in a certain way, so there are other options. It's not necessarily beneficial to, you know, anyone who's trying to get somewhere fast, but.
Yeah, no, exactly. Yeah, it's all compromise. If possible, I'd like to see that broken out then as a I get a separate item on our list. The tip tip list.
So. I would just say, Councilmember Schaefer, one of the items to consider too is, you know, adding and subtracting things isn't quite very simple. We are going through a comprehensive plan update. I know Laura's on here, so that is gonna then, like, that'll be the will be the tail wagging the dog, right? You're gonna look at your your comprehensive planning elements, your land use, all that. Then then transportation is gonna pick up and reassess what, if any, changes occurred, because it's quite a big piece to kind of take apart, put back together, as legal will tell you, right? We we can't just pick a project. We can put a project in our CIP, putting on the TIP is a different story based on the funding, and then you've got to look at growth and its contribution, so we can always fix existing deficiencies. But how we fund those with capital dollars or transportation impact fee dollars is very specific. We have talked about some of those subtleties on what to do in in our committee. I know we've spoken. The flip side is always too, we will end up sending more trucks down city roads, which is is part of safety and process and and construction, yeah, but yeah, nobody argues it's not a terrible intersection that our dear friends from a different jurisdiction have handed us, so. That does make it difficult. We do hear you. We do expect quite a change depending on how the comprehensive planning task in the next two years goes. So I I guess I I guess I just caution drastic changes are probably not possible, but understanding what is out there is something we need to keep track of.
Or would it make sense then to put it on a a capital improvement list? At this point then?
There's no, there's no reason to not put it on a list. It's just, again, funding. So, right, growth-related projects have have different buckets of money. I think this, yeah, it's something I wish we had more help. I kind of, I know we kind of talked about it earlier with other topics, but kind of the same intersection, you know, you've got Washdaw and and King County at the Woodville Duval Bridge.
A mess, sure.
And to be clear, too, the cost we have is signal, you know, work. It is not adding a lane to the bridge or doing anything out of jurisdiction per se. So I think that's kind of, I'm actually kind of going through that spreadsheet we were working on earlier at the committee meeting and, you know, seed money to get somebody to think up some options and then people to present to, you know, senators, congress, feds, that kind of stuff might be palatable, but it is, yeah.
Yes, non-trivial is what you're.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, no, tha- thanks. Thanks for the explanation.
Councilmember Napland.
Yeah, on those same lines, I I do have concerns that the scope or the cost of certain projects are underestimated or we don't have all the projects that maybe could or should be on there and all. I mean, just one example that had to do with the last agenda item is the item C one. If you look at that, you'd say, oh, six hundred and sixty nine thousand dollars. Hey, we're coming up about, right? Until you realize that C one isn't that specific stretch. It's citywide sidewalk completion. How many times have we referred to C one? And then projects in the C one category, we've used up that six sixty nine many, many, many times. So that what that means is we haven't been collecting potentially enough in our traffic impact fee, so that means the burden is falling on existing residents. And so, I mean, that the same exact thing in a much larger scale because Woodville-Duval intersection is so much more expensive. The underestimation of that project means the burden of it is falling on existing residents that are that are new construction projects aren't paying in to fix that enough to actually ever have enough money to fix it. And so what Councilmember Schaefer is bringing up is, you know, it feels like complicated and a big issue, but every day that goes by that we don't resolve that problem is leaving money on the table and handing a bill to existing residents or creating a problem that no one will ever be able to afford to deal with. So, I mean, the C one, the the project we're doing, we're only doing phase one. There's two phases on that one forty second thing, and that doesn't even encompass everything that would fall into the C one bucket. We've already used up all the money. So I hope we can get to a more robust process of doing our TIF and our impact fee calculation to better reflect reality. So I don't know, that's kind of commentary, maybe an ask. I don't really know.
Yeah, I think looking how, if you if you do look at the table in the packet in whole, right, we do and have changed it to identifying what is TIF eligible, what is, you know, deficiencies and what deficiencies are supported by growth, right? So we have, you know, the program only puts, you know, one hundred out of six hundred and sixty nine thousand, so eighteen percent-ish, right? And then the rest is grants and then city funds, so I I hear you. The only good news is at least the traffic impact fees that may or may not be dedicated to each of these projects. It is indexed annually as far as this collection. So, right, we should be collecting a better share, but I think I've heard Councilmember Lengel look at this several times and say, hey, you've got over twenty million dollars in projects that you're, you know, never going to collect twenty million dollars on, so. But it is a three-legged stool. We're missing one of the legs. So I think you can see how we had to handle it for Main Street, right? We we had some, we borrowed some, and then we received some grants, so. Big projects take big money, and I I hope the, you know, the intersection work and the controllers will help us with some capacity and some of the safety needs in Old Town with Washdaw's work coming online. King County Emergency Management, their new Zone One liaison has been working with us to connect not only myself and Washdaw, but King County to that intersection as well. So there are some of those small movements, albeit they're not a twenty five million dollar bridge job, but there's something at least starting out, so.
There is another opportunity too, when we do our transportation plan update, to look at our methodology for how we calculate our TIF based on projects and the all of the monies that go into what the project scope is for, and, you know, basically, we we do it by feet. So, you know, feet of lane, feet of sidewalk, feet of, and we look at our inventory in the in the city, so we can always look at updating that when we do update our plan as well.
Any other questions or comments? All right, and staff, did you need anything in particular with us or or you got what you needed or you just the first presentation here?
It's, yeah, it's just a basic introduction and then we'll come back for a public hearing. Hopefully, next month.
All right, thank you. So with that, we'll move on to our next item, which is AB twenty two dash twenty four, ordinance updating NPDES code for twenty twenty two with Director Lenishewski.
I have great news. I get to hand this off again to Ms. Grundell. It's riveting legislation. You're gonna love it.
Oh, yes, it is. Good evening again, everyone. Larissa Grundell, Public Works. So I'll share my screen one more time. This is it. It is code update. I know Steve talked to you guys. He talked to you guys, I think, last meeting about our annual report that's due for MPDS permit. So this is a layer deeper. We have requirements within. There's there's different requirements. It's a it's a four or five-year permit, and so there's different milestones that we have to meet throughout the the permit cycle. So this one that's coming up is due to have some updates by June thirtieth. So one of the sections of DMC that we're looking at actually adding is a new section for code enforcement that is specific to the utility code for storm. And then in order to comply with a couple other two other things, we are updating requirements for new development and redevelopment. There's Appendix ten of the permit which we're required to adopt. Appendix one of the permit which we already utilize and we have in code as requiring for new development and redevelopment standards and the management of stormwater, adopting a design manual and the pollution prevention manual. Currently, we're in the twenty sixteen version. And then we are required to add source control best management practices. So getting a little bit more detail, we are to implement in ordinance or other enforceable mechanism that addresses runoff from new development, redevelopment and construction site projects. We do currently have code, but we just, we need to update it to add Appendix ten, which is the requirement by June thirtieth of this year. And then also adding a code enforcement that's specific to these permit requirements for new development and redevelopment of of land. So an example of this code enforcement improvement would be, this is a picture of a violation that happened here in the city. There was a silt fence that was intentionally cut to allow the the silted water, turbid water on site to leave the site. So currently, our code is, it's not impossible to assess penalties and fines. It's just hard. It's cumbersome. It's a little outdated. It's not specific for storm. And we don't have any language for repeat offenders. So the new code section, it's storm-specific. There's a matrix that determines the fine. There is an additional penalty for repeat violators, which happens. There's, and it's clearly escalating, which is also required by the permit. So for controlling runoff, that's the the permit language is in the italics. Like I said, we currently do have a city program. The update is just to adopt Appendix ten and some, there's a couple of sections specific to new development and redevelopment that are in the packet. Um, and some, there's a couple of sections specific to new development and redevelopment that are in the packet. And then the enforcement code language. So the next requirement is we are, we're required to implement maintenance standards that are as protective or more protective of facility function than those specified in Ecology's manual or a Phase One program approved by Ecology. So like I said, concurrently, we have the twenty-sixteen manual. King County was required to update their manual. They did it in June of twenty-twenty-one. And so we would like to update their new man, or we would like to adopt their new manual. Basically what I just said. Um, and then there's really not much of a difference between the twenty-sixteen and the twenty-twenty-one version. There's minor editing. Um, there's some changes to the required modeling credits. Um, and the software is that can be used. Um, there's also some new language in there about the registration of underground injection control wells, um, which was kind of a big thing that Ecology wanted to start doing, and it's, it has to do with depth and all, all kinds of stuff like that. Um, there is a detailed summary of changes if anybody wants to ever look at it. It's on King County Stormwater Services page. Um, the next update requirement is that we shall implement a program to prevent and reduce pollutants and runoff from areas that discharge to the MS4, which the MS4 is the city's conveyance that we're responsible for. So there are private developments and, and uh, and commercial developments that discharge into our system. And we recommend updating Chapter nine oh six to add enforceable BMP language and also adopt um, King County's uh, Pollution Prevention Manual. So it's a great tool for helping not only city staff, but also consultants um, and private developers and citizens um, to get a hold of these source control um, issues. And that is all. If anyone has any questions.
Any questions? Oh, go ahead, Councilmember Napman.
Always have a question. Sorry. I'm just curious if this is the section of code where you would um, specify how the stormwater facilities are designed aesthetically, or if that is happening elsewhere.
No, not necessarily. The um, the King County Surface Water Design Manual is, it's the design manual. So it doesn't specify aesthetics of facilities.
Is it a drum anywhere? I'm just thinking there's a stormwater vault being built that's pretty high above grade and looks like it will remain exposed, and I'm just not sure if that's an aesthetic that is appreciated or fits into the environment, or you know, really follows trying to keep things looking the way and functioning the way they were before. Now you have a big giant above-ground concrete structure. Um, so I'm just trying to understand, like, where, where would that feedback um, be most valuable to promote change in what we do?
Um, I would think probably uh, DRC um, would be a great place to start with that. I, I don't know if that's necessary, if aesthetics are necessarily something that we can put in code. It's a slippery slope, mostly because um, there is the ability for people to develop their properties, and stormwater management is a part of that. Um, so there's other things that go into, based on zoning, what minimum densities are and, and how that can fit into a traditional pond or, or something that's uh, above ground versus something that's below ground. So it's not the easiest answer. I don't know if it's something that we would ever wanna put in code, but it's definitely something that maybe we could look at, um, some design elements for um, maybe our Public Works Design Standards, putting something in storm, in the storm chapter there. Um, we already do really try and force uh, low-impact development uh, BMPs, which is the green infrastructure, and that is, the reason we do that is to reduce or eliminate vaults. The problem with us in Duval is our soils are not conducive to those wonderful BMPs that I would love to use and make everybody use, but it gets to a point to where it's just not feasible to do it on a large scale. So we can make things smaller, um, but eliminating them is very hard. Hope that answered your question.
Thank you. I appreciate the answer.
Councilmember Isaacson?
Yeah, I got uh, two questions, but by process, I'll just ask one and then come back around to me, please. Um, following up on Jennifer's question, at what point does uh, an underground vault that's exposed as much as she's talking about, not really an underground vault anymore? And, and do the inspections from our city inspectors, at what point do you say, no, you can't do that? Obviously, that should've been done in the beginning phases, but it's not underground. Let's see it.
Yeah, and it's a very good question, and I, I do know specifically the vault that you're talking about. Um, we knew um, during the design and the engineering review of this project that there was going to be a couple of feet. I think at the most, there's gonna be four feet at one end that will be exposed, and we have required screening for the vault. And also, there's, um, there's other things that we can try and do to make it look pretty. I know it's not gonna be perfect. Um, there are some things that, um, there's an inlet and an outlet to a vault that have to be maintained, as well as the water that is held within them. So, um, it's really hard too with some of these uh, parcels that are developing out. There, the topography is hard to work with. The, there's, wetlands are hard to deal with, and that's really all that's left. So, um, not trying to make excuses, we did know that it was gonna stick up a couple feet. Um, but we do, we have planned on requiring that it's screened. So I know that Laura, that was something that was high on her review of the project um, from planning. So we will be requiring screening and doing the best that we can to make it look not like a big vault sticking out of the ground.
So Larissa, your, your point is, some of the standards that are the public works related standards are places we might be able to facilitate some of those discussions and items for screening, buried depth, all that. What the King County Surface Water Design Manual does is the water quality, water quantity, the specifics of how we manage the water.
And how much water is managed?
And, yeah, so there, there, there are some differences, but I think to Councilmember Napman's question, yeah, I think when we, we are bringing back the standards, we, we talked about that last year, so. Somebody else on the screen will be bringing them forward sooner than later, maybe after June, probably not before, but sometime.
Probably after.
Yes, those go there.
Yes, and so, um, in this, if there's, oh, there's more questions.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yeah, I just wondered, is this a, a, a good topic for the Public Works Committee to uh, to look at? Uh, study maybe a bit more in-depth and, you know, potentially make recommendations? Uh, would that be the right place? So what, I, I just really wanted to understand what you guys recommend.
For um, stormwater facility design?
Yes.
I think yes, absolutely. It's, it's one place that we could definitely talk about it, have a conversation, figure out if there's um, anything else that we can do outside of um, what we are currently doing. Um, absolutely.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. I, I, I for one would be very interested in that conversation to see, you know, what options we might have, and to better understand the constraints that we're, that we're under.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Councilmember Isaacson, did you have another question?
Yeah, I was just curious if you guys would be ready to uh, approve this, if we waived it, or do you really wanna wait and come back?
The code?
Yes.
Um, it's, to me, I think that if, it's a lot to digest. Um, it's a lot, it's a lot of code. Um, we're still, we have a, a sixty-day co- uh, commerce review period, and we don't have to adopt it until June thirtieth, so I think I'll leave that up to the council. Um, it doesn't hurt my feelings either way. Um, I would love to come back and talk to you guys about it if there's more questions that develop. Um, we will have to have a public hearing, I think, as well. Um, so if you don't ever want to see me again until we have a public hearing, that would be fine, but I can always come back.
All right, well, let's go ahead and move if there's no other questions. All right, John, I'm assuming you're, you're good now?
Yeah, um, no other council members gonna chime in and, and think that we're, would be willing to approve this, move it on. We'd have to waive it, do, have to make a motion to waive our procedure, right?
Yeah, well, we have to have a, we still have to have a hearing and wait for Commerce's approval, so it's.
No, so you're not in a position where we could. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, no, it'd be nice to have some of the code for enforcement adopted, but we're coming out of, out of winter anyway, where this is certainly, we're, we're gonna want it in place come October one, when we get to surface water management on construction sites in the wet season, but um, not that there isn't wet season in the summer. But yeah, no, it's, it's okay. We should wait for those timelines. I don't want you to conditionally approve something because of Commerce, there's something, we have to make an amendment, and we have to come back, so it's. It's okay. Well, it is on the top, it will be on the discussion next week at committee, so they can have a couple more, you know, topics of discussion and think about where things can fit in the future, not necessarily in this code, but in the standards and that kinda thing.
Yep. Yeah, and if there's any, if there's any review or edits or anything to any of the code language, you can email me directly um, or email Steve. Um, and again, I mean, the next time that we meet, if there's not a lot of uh, still questions or um, discussion that you guys wanna have, the probably the next time that we'll talk about it would be a public hearing.
All right, sounds good. So with that, we'll go ahead and move on to our next item, which is AB twenty-two dash twenty-five, letter of support to Mountains to Sound Greenway National Heritage Area Management Plan with uh, Director Thomas.
Good evening, uh, council. Uh, this is a pretty easy item. Um, we're requesting authorization for the mayor to sign the Mountains to Sound Greenway Letter of Support for the National Heritage Area Management Plan. It's currently in draft. And we provided a letter that is written on behalf of the entire city, so that would be council and the mayor. The plan definitely aligns with our natural resource stewardship priorities and our ecological and cultural resiliency goals. So if there are any questions, I am available to, to answer them.
Any questions? Uh, Councilmember Isaacson, did you have a question?
Nope, my hand's stuck in the air.
All right, anyone else? And if council's ready to make a motion, I think on this one, we need to suspend our procedures in Section five point six.
Do I make a motion? Oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Councilmember.
Uh, so I make a motion to suspend the rules and move forward um, with uh, voting on Agenda Bill twenty-two dash twenty-five.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second to, to suspend the rules. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes, and then is there a motion for the Agenda Bill?
Uh, I make a motion to approve Agenda Bill twenty-two dash twenty-five, authorizing the mayor to sign the letter of support for the Mountain to Sound Greenway Trust.
Second, Schaefer.
Hey, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Okay, motion passes. Thanks, everyone. And with that, we're moving on to our last agenda item, which is pretty easy, I think. AB twenty-two dash twenty-six, cancellation of city council meetings during twenty-twenty-two. And no, that does not mean all of them. That's all, hand this over to our city clerk, Sarah McMillan.
So, um, looking over the council's meetings and the holidays and things, I noticed that um, one of the meetings falls on July fifth, which is the day after the Fourth of July, uh, which the council, you know, could meet, but a lot of people go on vacation around that time, members of the public included, staff and council. Um, and then the uh, second meeting is December twentieth, which is very close to Christmas time. And so I just um, thought that for, you know, planning purposes, we might, you might consider um, canceling those. You could also reschedule them. But if we know ahead of time, we don't, you know, we can plan things out, and we're not in a mad dash to um, to do things. So that's kinda was the idea.
Thank you. Does anyone wanna comment on that? I would just start by saying, I'll fully admit, in the past, I've been a little on the workaholic side and said, no, I'll be in town, no, it's fine. But, you know, I also wanna consider staff as well, and so um, I, I'm good either way, whatever council decides. So does anyone wanna chime in with their thoughts on counseling to those council meetings?
I'm blind. Council, canceling the meetings.
Okay. Anyone else, or does, go ahead, Councilmember Lengel.
No, I agree with that, and you can always um, add a meeting. I mean, it doesn't, you know, we, if we get stuck, so I don't think it does any harm by canceling them. Especially a meeting that might disrupt Christmas.
Anyone else, or does, is anyone ready to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. Um, I'm gonna do the, I think the, the dual motion that I, that I think uh, Mr. Kenny said was okay. I move we suspend the rules and approve AB twenty-two dash twenty-six, cancellation of city council meetings during twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
Okay, um, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Okay, motion passes, and with no further business, uh, this meeting is adjourned at ten sixteen PM. Woo, hope everyone has a great night.
Bye, everyone.
Good job, everybody.